Some agencies where when analyzed, it said like it took several hundreds of days to be resolved in 2024, which I actually don't think is completely accurate. Some of these cases were administratively closed, which just means that um an agency probably saw that there was a case that had been open since say 2021 that was a graffiti case. And they were like, obviously, there's not graffiti there anymore. I guess we should close it, which is a perfectly reasonable explanation. But regardless, it does point to the importance of consistent data procedures. As we can see, though, the top three agencies, DSNY, HPD, and NYPD, which earlier I stated made up seventy-five percent of 311 cases. NYPD has had a very consistent response time. HPD has increased like a roughly consistent basis. DSNY, there was a spike, I believe, in 2023, most likely because of those administratively closed cases. But it's also seen some extent of increased response time in days. Also, just a quick explanation, that's not necessarily indicative of anything negative, but it could be because of like other trends that affect this, such as the city not hiring inspectors to carry out this work. And next slide. So, understanding recent 311 trends, I apologize for this slide. It's likely because it was converted to PDF. But I then tried to break down the cases by clear categories. So I did housing violations, sanitation issues, parking violations and noise complaints. And so I was able to identify data from February of 2025 and March of 2025 and identify the increases and decreases between the months. Similarly, to the agency information, this also is greater than seventy-five percent of all 311 cases in these months, indicating that these are reasonable areas to prioritize when understanding these trends. I believe, and I can't see it very well, but noise complaints have almost doubled in the past month. Parking complaints as well, and I believe that housing violations have gone down. But next slide. So in terms of recommendations, when discussing this with Celeste, it was brought to my attention that there used to be community walks in the community board, which I believe are a really important way to not only engage with community members and make them aware of these things, but also to further kind of cultivate the collective action that we can make to participate in improving the quality of life in our communities. So I created a revised survey based on my initial survey. Some of the areas that I found, you know, could be further addressed as well as what I found in my results and things that I think could be further iterated in the future. Next slide. Furthermore, when carrying out this work, it would be great if flyers could be used to further highlight the importance of 311 and reporting quality of life issues and the important role that community members can play. Speaking to the widely felt issues facing the community, the importance of reporting things to 311 based on both resolving these issues and creating records of the issues, following up with elected officials, the significance of doing this. Because recently, for example, there was a case in Brooklyn where there was a settlement between tenants and landlords, where the landlord actually had to pay out a $6.5 million settlement. And ultimately, creating a way in which, you know, community members, when surveyed, can follow up with the community board, find this contact information, and further engage with the process. Next slide. An additional recommendation I have would be creating a WhatsApp group for announcements. It could be a way for the community board to provide updates, like trends in these quality of life issues. I provided an example, just, you know, I know we all receive many texts and emails, but at the same time, with a very kind of concise update with these numbers and upcoming meetings, I think it could be a pretty useful way of engaging people. I really am interested in your feedback, though. I'll probably send a survey after this meeting just to hear, would this actually be interesting or helpful to create this kind of group? Because, you know, it is important to make sure this is valuable or would, you know, be useful to people. And so I think through this, there could be a pilot program, creating like block reps who are knowledgeable about 311 and are familiar with their neighbors who could engage with us. Also, people who are active in the community board and meetings as well, before something like this would be rolled out to a wider audience if it's deemed useful. Next slide. And so for implementation, I think, you know, community boards are always stretched for capacity. So part of this project will be creating a guide for how to find this information and how to analyze it so that it could be shared with a greater audience through the various communication platforms of the community board. Next slide. So in conclusion, 311 data is incredibly valuable to understand quality of life issues. But it really is only as valuable as the information is accurate. It largely provides a snapshot of those who are reporting it. So it may have a disproportionate result. Every process, every actor in this process has a significant role to play, whether it's the residents, the agency, its elected officials' offices, as well as the community boards. And so this information that currently exists in places like NYC Open Data is incredibly useful. Like it should, there is a way to access this information, but it still isn't accessible enough in other than people who already have an understanding of how to analyze this data. So I think community boards can play a really important role in facilitating this information because they're at this important connecting point between so many stakeholders. And they are a place that residents have a say in engaging these stakeholders and ability to influence them. So basically, this would empower residents with a greater understanding of 311 and really has the ability to leverage it as a tool when so many neighborhoods are facing the consequences of gentrification. And so I am hoping that the lessons of this project are useful as a tool to empowering residents, both in Bushwick and really beyond, and can be useful to Community Board Four and other community boards across the city. Next slide. Yeah. That's it. Thank you so much. Thank you so much to Celeste Leon, to Community Board Four, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Felix Zavallo, CB4 member. Thank you for the presentation, very important for our community. And I think 311 is so many important for everybody in this community. I want to know, I understand, people call to 311 and 311 take all the information, they explain what they had to say, and they send them to any agency. But I want to know why before, when we was calling for, for example, for parking violation, they say in 24 hours, we're going to be there. But now we have a situation, we call 311 and sometime nobody appear. I don't know if you can bring a little more information about that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. I really appreciate that question. So why do, why does it take more time to like respond to these cases? How do we resolve some of these issues? You know, the project itself won't completely resolve all of this, but it did really inform me that, you know, I think in many cases, there can be issues of the city not providing enough resources to these agencies that resolve these problems. And I think a big part of this project was figuring out how to hold people, like, you know, how to provide accountability, how to provide oversight. Because in addition to reporting this information to 311 and trying to get, you know, these issues resolved, it's also important for people to be engaged in the process. So if, you know, if it is taking a while, then their people are made aware of avenues to resolve it, like speaking with their elected officials. Or, you know, in many cases, it's not just the agencies. Like I said, it's about funding. So figuring out how to bring people into this process so that people can like work together with the various stakeholders in order to resolve it. Yeah, thank you for your question.
Hi, Christine Maldon, CB4. Thank you so much for the presentation. One question, one comment. So I don't know if this came up at all in your research, but a couple of times, and for example, the Permits and Licensing Committee, it's come up when there have been, say, let's just say, businesses that have a bad reputation who've come up for renewal. And we sometimes, not always because of time, do our due diligence and go in and look for the 311 complaints. I do anyways. And of course, Open Data is not like the most user-friendly resource. But what we've noticed is that sometimes we might have someone from the community who comes and says, I've complained about this a million times. And then we go and look on the Open Data and there's no record of it. So I don't know if that's a question of, you know, how the complaints are triaged, et cetera. So I wonder if you have anything to say about that. And then the second point I would just make, and this probably falls well outside your scope, but it seems like it might be nice to have a, some sort of a threaded issue feature within 311 so that there's not always a new complaint being leveraged, but rather one that you can track over time, which would probably be both more manageable for the agencies as well as, you know, not creating extra clutter. So there's not like 300 times the same issue, but rather once with updates and it's happening again and et cetera. That is all. Thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate the question and the comment. So in regards to the question, while that specific issue hasn't come up, I think it speaks to the importance that like, you know, of what I said, where the data itself isn't going to tell you everything. And as you said, there might be an issue that is very pressing, but it's underreported in the data. And I think that could be an important role for the community board to play, where once this information is highlighted, there can be a way in which to engage like the people who surround it. Because, you know, once this information is better quantified, better logged, you know, I think it could play a bigger part in resolving these issues. To your comment, I think it would be really helpful if we could talk afterwards because I am writing a report about this, hopefully a memo to, to correspond with like city agencies. So I think that would be really helpful.
All right, there we go. Hey, Zach Hendrickson, board member here. I just want to say you did a really great job with this. And I want to keep my question kind of the scope of what you're, you're really able to do and the research here. My, my biggest question, I know that you analyzed this over time, but in the mapping, I was wondering if you did that as well? Because I guess one thing that, just like a bit of a question comment, like one thing that I know that I'm sure came up in your research, right? Is there's been decent evidence that shows that gentrifying communities see spiking rates of 311 and 911 calls, particularly from wider incoming residents on folks who are longtime residents of color. This is like long documented over the last 10 years or so. And so I'm curious, you know, like especially looking at the NYPD calls, like they're routed through 311, those seem just like a huge increase over time. And so, yeah, I'm wondering in some of these hotspot block groups, if you notice shifts in kind of like, oh, between 2015 and 2020, for example, we see spiking in NYPD and then it like maybe decreases or whatever. It would be really interesting to think through the ways, the types of complaints shift over time, depending on, as we've seen, you know, demographics shift. So I'm just curious if you had anything about that.
Yeah, I really appreciate the question. I did not analyze changes over time based on and visualize that. That being said, that would be a really interesting next step. And I think would be possible with the data that is available. So that could be something I could follow up on.
Hi, Annette Spelling, Community Board Four. My question is, what can we do to convince people to call 311? A lot of people still do not trust 311 and they don't believe that when you say you don't have to identify yourself, that 311 can't track your information.
Yeah, all of those are very good questions and I appreciate them. Why, you know, I think it was fair to see in like the number of days it took to resolve these issues, that I think people some kind, sometimes like almost lose faith in these kinds of services. So it's a matter of both people not being aware enough, but then also people being aware and kind of reluctant. And so what I would say to that is I think it would be really important to do these kind of outreach events, to do like these kind of walks and talk to our neighbors about like the issues that they're facing. As well as, you know, creating a space where people feel like their voices are heard, where they can talk to their elected officials to make sure these issues are followed up on, to make sure that they're corresponding with, you know, city agencies so that their voices are heard there as well, to make sure that, you know, cases are followed up with. But also even the step above that, making sure that, you know, these positions are funded. Because one aspect of my research that I didn't include in the slides was I believe there is like a period of time where there were roughly like 100 vacancies for HPD inspectors. And so that is not necessarily like the fault of the city agency that is responsible for carrying out. But it could be an issue of funding to make sure that there are enough professionals carrying out this work or even making sure that people apply to those jobs. Because in many cases, these are pretty good jobs and people might not be aware that, you know, they're looking for people to work. And so I think that could be another example of how to further reduce the number of days it takes to resolve cases. And I think, I'm not sure if you had one more question? The trust. Yeah, yeah. So regarding the trust, I, I think, you know, trust is a process. And so it will take, you know, spaces where stakeholders can engage with each other to kind of take care of those issues.
Hi, Jason Gerst, CB4. One quick question and then one comment. So like what would you recommend for board members that are interested in like analyzing this data for themselves? Is it all available on Open Data? Is there any special things you suggest?
Yeah, so all of the information I used is publicly available on Open Data. And I'm hoping to create a very short guide for how I was able to analyze a lot of this data.
Okay, cool. And then Mr. Zabios, I thought your question was interesting, but I feel like maybe Deputy Inspector, the question about the parking is maybe a better question for you to answer either now or when you speak to us later. Yeah, I mean, I've had like some mixed results submitting 311 for vehicular violations. So I'm kind of just interested to hear how does the department approach? Thank you.
May I? Deborah Hicks, Community Board Four. Are there signs to put up that you can like put up like traffic signs that say noise-free zone like they do in hospitals? And with a particular fine for it? Because I'm just wondering, people, you call 311, they still don't respond to the police. They still don't respond to the fact that they're making noise. And I'm just wondering if a visual could exist that will find them immediately so that it pays that blast of music, sit outside at three o'clock in the morning talking loud, that kind of stuff. Because when you read the report, it says they'll get contact with you eight hours later to give you the results. Half the stuff is over, it's gone within five minutes of 10 or 30. I'm just thinking the way that it'll work because calling 311 for noise doesn't work. So I'm just wanting, in addition to calling 311, could they perhaps create, I guess, a city council to have a sign with Department of Traffic that says noise-free block in a particular area, like a hospital? And then there's a fine attached to it? Maybe that would be more convincing to those revelers in the summertime who want to come on the block blasting the audio sound system? You know, or want to play their music loud to dance, to have a party? And it's not a black party day. What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I think those points are pretty well taken. They might be like a little bit outside of like the scope of my research, but I think that's something I could try to follow up with you on and maybe do more research on as well. But thank you so much for that question.
People get discouraged when there's danger, you could call 911. They're there. 311 is a 24-hour situation. And you're going to be so frustrated and not believing in it at all, you know?
Yeah, thank you so much for your comment.
Stephanie Anderson, CB4 member. I wanted to know, just piggyback on Miss Spelling's question, to say, do you have any flyers that either you can bring for us to pass out to the community and inform them of 311? I mean, the more you see, maybe the more you trust.
Yeah, so thank you so much for that. So I did the first draft of the flyers. These flyers aren't ready for primetime yet, but I'd be happy to, you know, listen to feedback to hear what people think before, you know, providing them. And then after this collaboration, I'd be happy to share them.
Great, thank you so much.
Of course. Thank you for your question.
All right, I have, I have two and, and it's not indicated in here. I know that from February 1st, 2025 to March 31st, 2025, NYPD from February had 1,459 reports. And then for March, 2,153. Now, this is only people that called. My question to you is, is there any data in regards to the NCO program that people call on the side when they have an issue on their sector? See, it doesn't reflect this because a lot of times the officers do give them their name and they do have communication with the precinct itself. Sometimes that's why the data is in as hard as you see now because people have communications with their sector, Charlie or whichever area there is. And officers give them their number and now they leave a message or call Community Affairs and then they address the problem. So that too is not indicated here in regards to the services and the call they get that should have been to 311, yet they took care of it on their own, which I know is more than what, what's on here.
Yeah.
For, for, for fact, because I myself, I get called and I say, why are you calling me when you can call the precinct directly or speak to the Community Affairs Officer or to the community board, which we don't have data, which I think we do or don't have data in regards when you guys, when they do call in regards to a complaint that's not on here in regards to that. And that needs to be focused on too, so it doesn't look like 311. I know I, I called 311 the other day when I was going to Borough Hall and I just wanted to, I couldn't believe it. I was going to Borough Hall and on the opposite side of the line, I witnessed five kids on top of the train. You're laughing is not, the blood, I was like, I got on the phone call with 911 and they had me a hole. I was like, how is 911 got me a hole? But then I realized that the guy that was next to me was calling 911 complaining to the same thing because they seen him. The kids jumping from train to train. And they're asking me, I said, the J train to Eastern Parkway and five, and from train to train to train, 12 and 13-year-olds. And I'm like nervous thinking that old man, I'm going to witness one of them kids fall in a train because it's moving and the kids on top of there. And it's funny. It's not funny. So those, we really need to address those concerns too. But I don't know if 311 is a tool for us because by the time I was a kid, by the time they came there, everything was already done. It ain't as easy as calling the precinct or calling the officers themselves and addressing this. So this doesn't indicate when the officers respond to some of the jobs without them being reported, right?
Yeah, so this information would only be for 311. So any information outside of 311, I wasn't analyzing. Because, yeah, this is just focusing.
So you want us to, you want, you, you say implementation, the guide, 311 required between the months. What does that mean?
So this would get a better sense of like what people call 311 about in a month like February? And then how many times people call about various issues in March? And like it would compare, you know, the number of times people call about one issue and like the change over time, like, you know, are the cases going up? Are they going down and by how much? I think it could be useful for people to know about that.
And analyze in Google Sheet. What does that mean? How do, what do you see?
Yeah, yeah. So that's just kind of how I Yeah, yeah. So that's just kind of how I did it. So, you know, I downloaded the information. I put it into a Google Sheet and then I used that to kind of like do like the analysis to figure out what the changes are. Because like I was saying, this information, it's like the number of 311 complaints are available online, but it's not always clear about, you know, what it means or how to interpret that information.
And this other that you want us, uh, implementation is to send a report to city agents where the community board is involved regarding implementing and documentation process. So that's where we as community board deal with city agencies and make sure that they do their due diligence. That's what we're here for. So, thank you. I have one more question here, then we're going to call it quits because we got a lot on agenda. We also have elections.
Yeah, and thank you so much for those questions. I really appreciate it.
Joena Bennett, Community Board Four. And this is almost to piggyback on what Mr. Kamachi said. Every year, the executive board gets together. We have to do a budget that addresses the needs of the community. We prioritize these, they go by city agencies that we direct our needs to that have to do with the quality of life, exactly what you're talking about. The reason why someone would call 311 is usually related to quality of life. And we're talking about the, the mayor is about to roll out this program that has to do with quality of life. You made a recommendation that we should urge as private citizens that the city agencies hire more people to respond to these. We write these recommendations year after year and the agencies respond to us with like we're just gerbils on a, on a, on a wheel every, every single year, not giving us answers to, 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 to our questions. So in addition to getting, as Ms. Felon just asked, to getting the public to trust 311, I think the community board, and it's not just Community Board Four, has a problem trusting city agencies to respond to the needs of the community. And I don't know that it's, I don't think that's your job, but how, and how do we get the feedback necessary? Or what community board four is charged to do our job?
That's, that's a really great question and you know, maybe it's the question that we're all trying to figure out. Because, you know, I think as I, you know, have been found in my research, 311 is a tool not just for reporting issues and not just for documenting issues, but it could be a way for people to better understand like this process and the role that they play. So, you know, if we want more of any part of this process, whether it's our elected officials or if it's the city agencies or whomever, it is going to take a much larger level of engagement, a much larger level of people understanding the process, not just 311, but also the political process. You know, for people to realize that their voice does matter so that when these issues get brought up by a community board, the community board also, or rather, these issues are also widely known by the communities beyond the community board as well to further make these concerns known. But yeah, you know, we're not going to solve all of it immediately, but, but I really appreciate your question. I really do.
These are all great points, very exciting conversation. And as some of you may know, the community boards used to be 311. We still have the typewriters where folks used to use special paper to insert all of those requests. And then the Bloomberg administration happened and that's when 311 was started. And just so everyone knows, the, the synthesis for this project, where it came from, every city agency that we work with has their own individual internal service request system. So 311 is just to track those complaints. It's super important. We could not be 311 with the three staff in the office, so we definitely need this type of tool. But there's certainly room for improvement. There's great potential to use this as a tool for advocacy and for social justice. And for that, I say, thank you, Zev. Great work.
Yeah, thank you so much, everyone.
Another public hearing item, CB4 revised responsible development policy. Oh, hi, Ann, our Chair Ann and our Economic Development Chairperson.
Not almost. So hi, everybody, Ann Guiney. My fellow committee member, Christian and I are going to present an update to, a draft update to the Responsible Development Policy. Many of you are familiar with it. We originally passed it in 2021 and the whole goal is to gather from various sources, from conversations, from regular meetings, from things like the Bushwick Community Plan, a statement of values, a thing that we know we need and we believe in. There's so much development happening here in Bushwick. We wanted a simple document, it's about five-ish pages that we could hand to somebody who would like to build so that they know exactly what we want. It is, again, it is not enforceable, but more of an aspirational and statement of values. Like this is what we know from coming to all of our committee meetings and our board meetings and, you know, tracking projects. This is the sum of our knowledge that we have gained. One of the big revisions in this, and so it's a streamlining and a reorganization, but we did actually think about the whole City of Yes proposals in light of this to make sure it was up to date. So it's four years later and hopefully, you know, I'll probably be, I'll be long-term limited out, but it'll get updated in another three or four years. It has to be a living document. So here we go. Yeah.
And, and I'm sorry, um, my chair, I'm sorry for, and it's just an advisory because we are an advisory board and we're only advising them. They don't have to take it, but this is what we want and we're advising, we're doing our job. All right. Even if they don't, we still fight for whatever we can't fight for and then we'll let the powers be. So we're just an advisor because we don't want to make sure, because a lot of times these developers come to us and say, oh, I don't want to fill that or I don't want to do that and I'm not committing to that. And then we say, well, we're not addressing your issues and we're going to, this is what we want and then it's a tug of war. So we want to make sure when they come to the table, they saw it, they understood it. They came by and saw what we wanted and how we wanted. And this is just a contract between them and us and we're advising them. We're not telling them that they have to take it because I know a lot of people says, oh, well, you got, you have a sheet there and they're not buying by the sheet. And council is not a buying by the sheet because they don't care and they did their own shenanigan, whatever it is that they do with the, with the developers. We're doing what we want. Electoral official is going to see what we want and they're going to break it down to make sure that just want to open mind and not turning around saying they're forcing them to them. Thank you.
And just for context, as folks who have come to the Housing and Land Use Committee know, a lot of the time developers will come to us with a zoning request that they want to move through and they'll reference the Bushwick Community Plan. And so it's clear that those who are doing their research are using the materials that we've given them to come prepared, but they don't often come referencing this document. And so part of what we wanted to do is make sure that this is fully up to date and as usable as possible. So that by the time they come to the committee, they've already looked at our set of criteria and what we want to see from them.
Great. So we're just going to run you through it and our last Housing and Land Use Committee where we went over this, there was a proposal on the floor to recommend that it be approved, this update. However, there was no heat in the office, so it was, we couldn't actually technically vote. So we will put this up for vote at the end of the meeting with other recommendations. All right, so.
Yeah, so really in our process of revising this, there were three things that we, that we did. First, we tried to consolidate down the existing version that we have to make it a little bit more usable and a little bit more readable. And then we went through and we reread it to make sure that everything that existed in the prior version still felt like it applied. And then we sat and we thought about what additional content we want to add that wasn't covered by the original version. So in terms of consolidating things down. Okay.
Yeah, so just if we can get the next slide, please. Yeah, so basically this is a list of the, the committee members. You can see the new members and people who are new to the committee. And just, these are the folks who have been debating this pretty much on and off since September. And we have been working on it pretty regularly. You see that. And then basically, again, we've pretty much given you the overview, but the, it's, this is a specific and direct response to the amount of construction that is happening in this neighborhood. And the fact that a lot of the developments have been out of, out of character or are at such high income levels that they are deeply, deeply unaffordable to long-term residents. And so this is something that we really wanted to focus on. And again, this, it's a concise document that we can hand to everybody. And, you know, I know causation is not correlation or correlation is not causation, but I think that the, the quality of the projects that we have seen in the last four or five years has gotten better in terms of affordability at least.
Okay, so then in terms of that sort of first step of consolidating down what existed already, the first version that we had from December 2021 had 16 different categories of criteria that the committee wanted to, or that the board and community wanted to see from developers. And so we went through that and consolidated that down to 11, 11 different categories. And then before we get into some of the new content, which we'll talk through really quickly, when we went through the old version to see how much of it still applied, we actually found that all of it still applied. This isn't a matter of changing the values that were captured by the first version. This is just a matter of making it a little bit more readable and then adding some additional content to address the new context that our community has seen since 2021.
And again, you know, city policy changes to make sure that those are reflected in there as well. So, yeah, so there's a very short preamble. Everybody got this, hopefully, or not this presentation, but the document. Hopefully you had a chance to read it. Just, it's an introduction, again, saying like where this came from and why we're doing it. And then it really just gets into the nuts and bolts of it. So one of the, the, obviously a very important thing is affordability. And so it's at least 50% of units should be affordable to a household earning the neighborhood median income paying no more than 30%. Like that's probably the biggest one. We have a preference for working with not-for-profit developers. That doesn't always happen, but sometimes it does. And that's great. And this has come up recently and this is, I think, something we've talked a lot more about, that we're really looking for developers who are interested in expanding access to permanently affordable home ownership opportunities for people, not just rentals. Because I think that in terms of, you know, neighborhood stability and like really building community, that is something that can be very important too.
And then the next set of new content relates to the unit composition or the size of the units that are included in a building. And so here we again tried to be as quant, a little bit more quantitative than the 2021 version. And we added the expectation that the number of, the mix of units that are included in a building should reflect the Bushwick community. So we don't want to see these buildings that are only, only studios and one bedrooms. We want family units to address the families in Bushwick looking for houses. And we also encourage developers to exceed city requirements for supportive housing, things like housing for seniors, transitional housing, housing for folks returning to society, things like that. And then we also added a piece on small and shared housing to be responsive to how this community and this board voted with respect to City of Yes. That was one of the pieces of City of Yes that we singled out specifically and took a separate vote on and voted against. And so we added a piece, a piece to reflect that here as well.
So we also looked at and updated the sustainability and resiliency sections and really looking at providing tenants with full waste management options. This is obviously changing as we speak at the city, so next revision, this may go away because the laws are in process of changing. So that's one thing. But trash is a huge issue around here and we wanted to flag that. And then community benefits, we always ask developers to incorporate infrastructure improvements, whether they're traffic calming, MTA accessibility, water retention tanks into the site. And there are certain city programs that developers can use and we just want them to know, we want you to take that into account to make sure that infrastructure is a real consideration. Site amenities should be made available for public use for either free or affordable rates. You know, we, I think everybody's learned so many lessons from the Rhine Gold development. They have a public space that didn't open for five or six years, which is bonkers. And so we want to hold people's feet to the fire on that one. We also, the flip side is the building just down the street, the senior center. They convinced, I think, HPD to put in a room for pure community use. You don't have to be affiliated with that building. You can book it and that was a real breakthrough and that was exciting. So then, yeah, oh, and privately owned public spaces have to adhere to the minimum hours of public access as outlined by DCP. I mean, that's legally they're required to, but it doesn't always happen. So again, just keeping people's feet to the fire and letting them know that we know and that we're paying attention to that. And then this is super important, again, referencing Rhine Gold. Any community benefits agreement entered into as part of a development project has to have clear and strict legal enforcement mechanisms. We're not getting burned again. Whatever we, and the way they do that is often to partner with a not-for-profit and then there, somebody has a party to, you know, push back legally.
And then the, the last section, I guess, two, two sections left. One is community engagement, which we're talking, when we talk about community engagement, we're talking about the work the developer does to communicate with their new neighbors, right? And to communicate what sort of construction timeline, what sort of disruption they're going to cause to the neighborhood. And so we, we added in an expectation that developers conduct residential and commercial outreach in both English and Spanish to the neighbors on their immediate block. And then the last section of new content here is about community board engagement. And there's a lot here just because this section was entirely new. I won't read through all of these points, but really the takeaway here is again, developers were coming to us and they weren't fully prepared to answer our questions, right? They would come to the table, but they wouldn't have all ownership partners with them, for example. And so this whole section just outlines what we expect to see or what they should have in, in line by the time they get to committee, let alone to the full board. So that when they get here, they have people who know the answers and are prepared to, to answer to the community itself.
And this is another thing, I'll just throw it in because it's been a recurring problem and I'm really happy that this is in here, that we ask people to give us stuff at least 24 hours in advance of a committee meeting, ideally more, so that we can ask them good questions and we can, I mean, I think all the committees do great work here. At Housing and Land Use, we, there's often so much material that you have to look through beforehand. And if you're just being presented 42 pages of material for the first time, how are you going to ask an informed question? So we really are tough about that now. So I think that's pretty much it. Again, we, it's a revision of an existing document. The document, we hope you guys find lots of, you know, interesting stuff in there. We hope to get your support for it. We also, as Mr. Kamachi said, it is not enforceable, but as a very strong statement of values, I think it tells people what we want to see and that matters a lot. Thank you. Any questions?
Any question?
Yeah, yeah. Hey y'all, just wanted to say this rocks. And I've loved like really following the development of this and the work you all have been doing from, from afar. I had one question that I feel like you probably have an answer to. In the note on affordability, I noticed that you use neighborhood median income. And I was a little curious about that because at least from what my, like my understanding is is that the Bushwick median income is actually higher than the New York City area median income? Am I totally off on that? Because at least what I'd seen from like 22, 23, like we're, we're technically higher, at least from what I saw.
I'd have to check on that. I don't have that at the top of my head, but my understanding is that it's actually a lot lower. If you look at just the outlines of Bushwick, it is lower because the area median income is calculated, all five boroughs plus Westchester. And obviously people in Westchester make a lot more money.
That was my understanding too, but then I was, I wanted to double check myself. So I was doing some quick Googling at least, which is not comprehensive, obviously. But I just wanted to flag that because I think the way it's written is, without being clearly defined, I, I would worry about us like setting ourselves up there and you should. about us like setting ourselves up there. Um, and you should, yeah, I, I just want to like encourage a little bit more clear, like definition of like what exactly we're looking at. Um, so that's like not a standard thing. Um, but I, I really, really love it. And so that was like my only really
Can I give a thought on that?
Yeah, for sure.
Um, appreciate the question. I think the, the principle that we're trying to communicate with this is that the housing that is built in a community should be affordable to that community, right? And so I, I'm not, I don't know if the, how the Bushwick median income compares exactly to the citywide AMI, but the principle that we're trying to communicate here is neighbor specific, neighborhood specific in that way, regardless of whether or not that is a little bit plus or a little bit minus of the citywide average.
But I think your point holds in the sense that as Bushwick has gentrified the AMI or the local median income, it probably has risen over the last 10 years. No question about that. So I think it is worth looking at and making sure, you know, again, we're trying to keep it affordable for as many people as possible and that is our goal.
Yeah, sorry. I, I wasn't done, but, um, no, 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 you're good. You're good. This is why I asked. Um, uh, and I totally support the vision, which is why the only reason I'm even like raising this. Um, just to like, yeah, I was pulling from the Furman Center, uh, has, has it listed at 94,000? So I don't know. That seems high, but again, just
Crazy. Yeah.
Yeah, we should, I just clarify where that is. Um, and I don't know if you want to do like percent of neighborhood median income or something like they do with AMI. Just wanted to flag that. And the last thing is very, very small, but since this is a statement of values and it's not enforceable, um, we should go as big as possible. And I think you all have, but at least 50% of units, uh, should be two plus bedrooms. Just very small, but you know, it's going to be tough to enforce anyway. Like let's push for it.
We always, that's always one of the questions. Anybody comes before us, Mr. Camacho says it. If he doesn't, somebody else says it. We need bigger units. We want to keep families here. So it's in there and we always, we like bang that, we bang that nail every time.
I want, um, Stephanie Anderson, CB4 member. I want to say, um, thank you so much for putting together such an organized, um, document. I think it's really going to be great. And I love the, um, rent to buy aspect because a lot of hedge funds are just buying up everything. So that may not be, um, possible in the future. So it's great that you guys are putting that forward. Thank you.
Thank you. More questions?
We're moving down the line here today. Uh, my name is Alan Gamboa. I'm a public member. Um, I had a question. You said both that this is not enforceable, but also that, um, developers would come to the subcommittee and the community board. So what exactly do they ask for? And what exactly can, um, the community board give them or deny them or?
So for example, um, this happened, uh, I guess last fall was it? Uh, uh, or when people come for a U-LR change, which is a land use. So they want to change an M-zone to residential. And we pretty much say flat out, no, if it's not going to be affordable, we're like, come on, like this is an exchange. We're telling you what we want. So this really comes into play. Um, and again, we're also trying to maintain our, uh, manufacturing spaces. That's a, a value from the Bushwick community plan. So, uh, what, it's not enforceable, but they do come and they say, this is what we need. So these, the John Doe Fund and a private developer, there's that site on Eastern Parkway that we talked about several months ago, where because of the weirdness of the lot, they could only build on a tiny bit of it. And they said, we're going to do a hundred percent affordable, affordable, but we could do just, the numbers crunch out even better for affordability. If we can go to 20 stories, HPD said we can go to 12 and they won't even pick up the phone to talk to us about this unless we have support from the community board. So that's a very typical, I mean, not typical, but it, it's a good example of there's a little push-pull on that. And then another guy came a couple of months ago, uh, to gas station Myrtle and, uh, Bushwick Avenue. And he's like, look, we want to do housing. And he had, I think 20%, we're like, he needs a land use change. And we said, we'd really like you to do better. Uh, this is so early in the process that it sounds like you have time. Come back, crunch your numbers, talk to the owner and come back with better numbers and then we'll talk. So that's the kind of thing. So it's, it's like soft power, I guess.
Hi, I'm not sure if that wasn't already answered, but in the existing spaces that have, uh, that are zoned, don't you actually legally, it is enforceable if it's, did you just answer that?
Well, if it's as of right, so say you want, you have a two-story house on a lot that the zoning permits four stories, they don't have to come to us. We ask them to as a courtesy, uh, but they don't have to. So you're absolutely, if what they're doing fits into the existing zoning, they don't even have to come by. The U-LR is enforceable, but the city council ultimately is going to make a vote, uh, with our input, but they can also choose to ignore us. There's no mechanism for us to say, hey, city council, you have to do what we say.
And, and I'm constantly, I'm, uh, Camacho chairperson CB4, I'm constantly arguing and me and Celeste are constantly fighting, uh, because we're constantly saying, um, Bush, uh, uh, Willinsburg had a rezoning. And there's a more affordable housing and Bushwick never got a rezoning. And there's market rate housing more than affordability. So you think about that. They got a zoning, they got affordable housing. We don't have, we got market rate housing. If you see Bushwick Avenue, uh, they're knocking down all them homes is as of right because Bushwick is our sixth and people don't know. So we're trying to make sure we keep our family here and our people here that couldn't afford to live here before. Now they can, and now they pushing them out because now this is, there's 800, 800 fam, one and two family homes, uh, on foreclosure now. Eight hundred, eight hundred, two and three family homes, Latinos and blacks. So think about that. Uh, I want to thank you guys and we have to really push this, uh, and make sure that we hold people accountable, uh, for their actions when they come to us because we want to continue to be here. So, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. I just one last thing. Um, uh, actually, no, thank you. No more, no more thing.
This rounds up the public portion of CB4, uh, roll call. Uh, it's, uh, first roll call, Celeste?
Isa Abni, Stephanie Anderson, Joanna Bennett, Maqiba Brownalane, Robert Camacho, Felix Ceballos, Andrew Choi is excused, Alina Davis.
Present.
Cecilia Fabian, Freddie Fowler, Joanna Fuente Singh, Jason Gers, Christopher Graham is ex, oh, is here. Got, got you. I just saw the name. All right. Let me check. Anne Guiney, Zachary Hendrickson, Deborah Hicks.
Here.
Tanisha Honey again is excused, Barbara Jackson. Kaisha Johnson did not renew. Her term ended on March 31st. Vergi Jones, Tara Jones Thomas, Luisa Jose, Christine Malden, Freddie Madison is excused, Alex Moreno, Ramika Nichols Barnes, Zuma Novoa.
Present.
Raul Ruby, oh, got you, Zee. Raul Rubio, Elise Ruiz, Milagro Sandoval, Annette Spellen, James Stewart, Christian Celeste Tate, Ben Tucker, Jerry Valentine.
Present.
Linda Whitfield. All right. If you have not signed in, please sign in.
Hi, Celeste. It's Andrew Choi. I'm here too.
Oh, got you, Andrew. One second. Let me just put that your remote. Okay. Twenty-four members constitutes a quorum. All right. And just please, before you wrap up, thank you for signing in. Don't forget to sign. And all elected official representatives, please sign in at the front as well. Same sign-in sheet as the board members. All right. We will now ask board members, you can please help yourself to a meal this evening quietly as we move on with the agenda. And next we have our acceptance of the agenda. Is there a motion? Okay, Raul made the motion. Mr. Ceballos seconds, all in favor. Any abstentions, any opposed? So moved. Acceptance of the previous meeting minutes. Is there a motion? Okay, Raul made the motion. Mr. Fowler seconds, all in favor. Any opposed, any abstentions? So moved. And agenda number four, Mr. Camacho, our chairperson's report.
Uh, the volume is so loud. There's a, uh, March 20th at six o'clock, I was at the Tenant Association Meeting at Home Garden. Uh, Celeste was, uh, with me. Uh, we were here, some of the concerns that was going on. Uh, obviously there's still some things that need to be addressed. I know some of the elected officials were there. So we're working and trying to assist them in any way we can. Uh, that same day, uh, I, I walked over to a 335 star CEC meeting on the 21st of Friday. We had a meeting with Riseborough in regards to Casa Posiba and some of the things that are going on. They're still working on some things. So we can give you our guys more update on the 24, the EPTC SCB4, uh, meeting. I participate on the 25th, uh, myself and Celeste was at, uh, at three to five from, uh, Bushwick Coalition. Uh, El Puente had, uh, had a coalition going on. So we, uh, went there on Wednesday, the 26th, uh, for 80, uh, Nekabaka, uh, with the inspector, we, uh, called in all, uh, the people that are doing block parties. And the inspector, uh, gave them, uh, the rules in regards to, uh, what they must do, their responsibility as signing the permit to close the block parties, uh, responsibility of posting signs, uh, uh, keeping up, uh, the fire hydrants clear. Uh, do not close the block with a vehicle because if you can't find a vehicle, there's a fire emergency, you can't get there. Uh, only permit one sound permit. We're not having 500 permits. We're not having reggae on one side, salsa on the other, and soft classic music in the middle of the block. One, one, one. We're not doing emergency lanes must be clear. So we enforce it. We want to thank, uh, the inspector and, uh, officer, I call her Officer K, Community Affairs, because I can't say her name, you know, I don't want to even want to mess it up. And Officer Lopez thanked them. Uh, it was a good turnout. They understood. Uh, a little concern that I was having is that was that during that time, people applied for permits. So they came. So now we have another group, we have other groups that didn't get this. So hopefully maybe we can sit down and do another one with the people that didn't go. Cause every time they're constantly applying. Uh, so we want to make sure that they're all on the same page that says, well, I didn't go to that, cover a person. Oh, I didn't go to the precinct. So we want to make sure we'll set up with the inspector, make sure that the people that went cross-reference and the people that haven't gone, that are starting now, that's going to go in June or September, we can hold a meeting with them and, and read them the rules. Cause he got a, a tense rule here that he has. So thank you inspector and thank you, uh, Community Affairs for, uh, that and working with us to make sure, because there are, uh, block parties that aren't a shameless, but they've been there 20 or 30 years that were selling drugs and shooting. Some blocks still have shooting that they don't approve, but what they do try to work with some of the people on the block to give them a couple of hours because there are kids there and PD sometimes be posted there. So once it's three or four o'clock, they say, all right, it's over. You got to open up and they open the streets up. Some of them compliance, some of them aren't. So we want to make sure. Uh, March 27th, Thursday at 1:00 PM, the Shaper Book Trick event. Thank you, um, Reverend James, Pastor Reverend, I don't know, but, but Reverend James. Thank you Reverend James. He's sharing the committee on March 31st, Friday at 4:00 PM, uh, uh, seven, I went to 790 Bushwick Avenue. Uh, thank you Senator Salazar and her staff for doing the tax prep that they had there. They had someone from the taxes there at the public library. The same day I took a, I had to take a ride to a workshop at Borough Hall that they were giving. Uh, the workshop was great. It was in, in regards to, uh, how, how, how can I say it without, Celeste is getting ready to laugh, you know, uh, addressing situations and concern that maybe people have when I say no to a person and say no in a nice way, ask to no, you know, being rude and people. So it was, it was a working process. It was so funny because our parliamentary was there and, and they were giving us like, uh, uh, to be kind and to be nice and hi, Celeste, how's your day? And, you know, and now what are you doing? So it's, 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 it was funny because it worked and everybody was happy when they couldn't believe that I, I did work. And then all of a sudden at the end I messed it up. I said something I shouldn't have said and everybody started saying, ah, he didn't learn. So it's, it's a learning process. So obviously it was funny, but our board member fell on the ground and started laughing and we had to get up because she couldn't get back up, you know? So it, it was funny because you were so good. And at the end you messed it all up that I said, all right, well, I normally do that. I start well and then I end up wrong. So it was funny and, uh, I guess I was the laughing stock for that day. That same, uh, April 1st also was, uh, Brooklyn Borough Board meetings. Uh, there was a couple of things on the gender, on the, uh, Brooklyn Borough Board meeting. Uh, let me see if I have just a, a brief point on some of the things that were indicated on some of the, the meetings that we met. Uh, there are also activities at Borough Hall that they doing all the time. If people want to go and participate, uh, there's a lot of other stuff that's going on at Borough Hall that we can work with, uh, on agenda. Uh, was project, Project Net, Project Net, Flood Project Net update. Uh, there's a website that, uh, they're, they're trying to do. Uh, I know they're putting these sound barriers. I don't know how it works with flooded areas that they would know. It's, it's, we, I asked them to give us to copy of the presentation because, uh, as you know, some of Bushwick, uh, it's called, uh, Irving Floated Monitoring in NYC. So we wanted to make sure they could come, uh, do a presentation. Hopefully, uh, since the winter, maybe they can come in June or in May. We don't know what's on the agenda and make sure that, uh, the floods we can, can take care of. We have, I'm not too sure. They said that we only have one. I think it's on Wilson. I'm not too sure if they are. So what did they, they said they would send it to us so they can do a presentation. It was really intense. Uh, also I had, uh, uh, CB5 gave, gave out a flyer in regards to stop unlicensed cannabis. They have a scan here where they know where their licenses are so we can turn around and close those places down. So CB5 had given us stop unlicensed cannabis. And I guess that was it on that part on Borough Hall. And then, um, as everybody know, uh, April 2nd, uh, I was in a, in, in, with Nidia on a Zoom and all the elected officials, uh, with John Holker Learning Center. Uh, they eliminated six daycares employees and daycare. There's only one classroom. And we were told that, uh, DOE didn't fund the teachers for salaries. So I don't know if the board, there's a conflict between the board and DOE that they pay and they didn't pay. So now I guess our kids are being held hostage. For sure. So there's only one classroom. All the teachers were put in different places. Some teachers, I think resigned. I didn't get any more information on that. I know we met, we're done with Trill, trying to find out maybe a Jonathan when he We're done with Trill, trying to find out, maybe Jonathan, when you fill us in on just on a quick U N A on that. I know we're supposed to be having another meeting in regards to that. As I was a little shocked and surprised that the board from this daycare, it's a judge and lawyers. So I don't see nothing like our people there. So we really got to find out what's going on. So I don't think our kids should be held hostage, because D O E said they paid them. And the board said they didn't pay. So we don't have money to pay them. Get rid of them, close the classrooms down and only keep one classroom. So we need some clarification on that, because you know, it's bad enough what's going on. Then on the 3rd of April, Thursday at 6 P M, Civil, Public and and Safety. There was a presentation. There was no quorum. There was no quorum. Board members, if you're on committees, if you're on Zoom, it doesn't count. You have to be present. The quorum counts inside. You only count if we have quorum in. And it's constantly put in the newsletter, in the thing. So if there's six people there, six, we need four for quorum. We had no quorum. And the presenter was there. And they had did all their due diligence in regards to co-naming a block. And it was sad to tell them, they waited all day that we had no quorum, that they got to come back. And the daughter of the kid that was on that block has been there since the 50s, 55 and 50. So he gave back to this community a lot, and I wanted them to make the presentation for, you can see his daughter. And they got people from the block to sign everything, the letter. They also got letters from elected officials. So it was tabled because CB4 had no quorum. That doesn't look good, and it reflects on the chair too. So I guess we have to work on it. April 4th, Friday, there was a meeting at 11:39 Bushwick Avenue. Another one of our churches, United Methodist is the people there received a letter saying that they voted to close that church down. So the city didn't do that. No, the board voted, the diocese voted down. Celeste was with me. So our schools are going under. Our churches are going under. Our housing are going under. So what are we doing about it? We can't keep yelling and complaining and nothing gets done. We're tired of complaining and yelling and screaming. We got to hold people accountable. Everyone. The board, elected officials. All of us are accountable. Because we're failing on our schools. We're failing on our daycares. And our churches are separate denominators, but we need to find out what's going on. That church was there 150 years. So we don't know why they're closing. The food pantry that Anita Haynes has there feeds 2,000 people a day. 2,000. They're out. Bushwick is going to be starving. The church that was closed down because he was doing flea market is using the church that's there. They're out too. So I'm just bringing information back to you guys. We got to do something. 12 o'clock, I also stopped by CB4 that day, April 18, Tuesday, Permiss and License. I chaired that. I was, I know that we did a policy that when people come for permits, we put the days that we want, we put the hours that we want, that they don't serve alcohol, they can stay open whatever time. We make them sign it. And then we got board members that vote. They have a right to vote. But we can't pick and choose the hours we gave them. And we signed a speculation sheet that we gave them, that these are the hours, and we worked so hard on it. We should all be on the same page. We can't say I like this guy, because he gave me two seats the other day for me to go to the theater and then cater to the theater, because I think that's a conflict of interest, if I know myself. We can't say that we're going to allow you this hour to this guy, and because this guy's a bad guy, we're going to take away his hours and we're going to get, we can't do that. It's across the board. And if board members, there's a conflict of interest number, you can call a legal department. Before y'all get yourself in the jam, because I'm not going to get sued. Y'all want to get sued, y'all get sued. Making deals like Monty Hall, that's on you. That's not on me. So either you're going to represent the community board and what we do across the board, or you're going to sit with someone to create what they want. Because people are suffering here. The noise, the constantly things that are going on in Bushwick. And we're the Nightlight Activity Person here. There's a lot of issues going on. So we need to find out what this community board wants to do. Either we're going to keep working on these things that we give to developers, or we give to people that are giving permits, or we're not going to let them do, and this guy gets 4 a.m., this guy gets 7 a.m., this one gets 2:00 in the morning. And because it doesn't affect me, I'm going to get the guy 8:00 in the morning on the other side. Because it doesn't affect me. But you're supposed to be representing this community board. So we're supposed to be representing the community at large. And that's what I feel about it. And that's what we should be doing. Because it's not your cry, somebody else's cry, we got to help them. Regardless if he paid $5,000 rent or dollar rent. And also, I also inform Kim, we got these lawyers coming in here, turning around and telling Kim, constantly telling, bringing stuff that's not even filled out. So they're working for these clients, they're getting paid for it. And then we got to call them and tell them, you need this. You got to fix this. You got to get that. And then they come and start yelling that at Kim. And now I got to call this lawyer and tell him, Ken, don't work for you. She works for the board. That's your job. You get paid for that. You get paid to fill out that paperwork right, to make sure that you sign. And then we got that paper that we signed, that they signed, that they got to close from Sunday to Thursday at 12:00, and then Friday and Saturday at 2:00. And they cross it out and write their own hours, and then they authorize it. So now, she has to go back, send them a new form, and then they get mad, because they're not on the agenda and they don't get their license. And then they want to fight with us. And I told the lawyers, if your paperwork ain't done, we not putting you in. We're not going back and forth where she don't work for you. And I also told Celeste. And I told all the lawyers, and I'll be telling them constantly every day when they call. If you don't got your paperwork ready and you don't got it right, she'll give you a call, a courtesy call. Guys, I need this, but I'm not chasing you around. Because you're not going to be on the agenda. And when it doesn't work, it says, well, she gave you an email, you didn't answer it. That got nothing to do, oh, well, my secretary did wrote that. That got nothing to do with me. I don't get paid for, I don't get paid from her. She works for the board, she don't work for you. You get paid for that. That's your job, not mine. So I want to make sure that the board knows what we're doing and what we're dealing with on a constantly basis. And I apologized to Kim because no one should be attacking Kim. I don't know the situation. Because they told me she was. I wasn't there, there's three parts to a story, right? Everybody knows, right? Hers, the lawyers, and the truth. And I wasn't there, so I don't know. So I'm not taking side. I told the lawyer, if you got an issue, come to me, speak to me. We'll take care of the issue, me and Celeste will take care of. But they're not going to be arguing and fighting for you to get paperwork and putting you on the agenda, and then you're not there, and then you're fighting with Kim and saying that she's nasty and she's terrible. So I'm not going to do that. So I'm not taking nobody's side, because that's not what I do. That's, she don't work for them. And I told the lawyers that. Kim, Celeste, and Adalina does not work for the law firm. They get paid for that through their constituents. So that's on them. We give you the paper, you fill it out, you do it wrong, we tell you it's wrong, I'm not chasing you to correct it. We also had Wednesday the night, CB4 Disservice Cabinet Meeting. On Thursday, the 10th, me and Celeste went to Boys and Girls High School for the Borough Boards Statement of the Statement Address. Tuesday, the 15th, at 10:00. I went to there was two incidents. I went to Evelyn Hansley's Evelyn Hansley's daughter passed away. Her mother was a pillar in this community. Linden his name after her. I saw her grandson, I saw her son. And in the top of my head, I was wondering what's going to happen with the landmark that she has in that block. You know, when the family goes, right? You know what happens, right? People come out of the Woolworth, I got to tape it real. She has a home there. So I didn't want to get into it with them, and they said that the family's going to take care of whatever it is, hopefully. But she also had the open space that's between the new building, the green thumb that she had back there for many years. Evelyn Hansley was the Vice President of the 83 Precinct Council. She was on this board for a little more than 30 something years. So sweetheart. And lived in that community, our community forever. So I also want to let you know that I participated and went to Officer, not too sure if everybody knew, committed suicide. Shot himself on Bushwick. Raised and born in Bushwick. He was a detective. Young kid. Raised and born in Bushwick, a detective. Always wanted to be. I knew his family. And it was a line of blue. As you know, blue take care of themselves from one end to another. Y'all should have went. Bushwick was on the other side. And you should have seen that. It wasn't blue, it was family. And you had to see these kids crying. He played baseball in Bushwick, he grew up in Bushwick. He lived in Bushwick, everything. And it was, when they had the casket, the lines were forever. I seen people that lived in Bushwick in the 70s and 80s still coming, because they knew who he was and what he was and how he was in this community. And why he wanted to be, he always wanted to be an officer. And I tell our officers, we're here. Forget about that rhetoric on the side. If you need something or something is wrong and you need someone to talk to, we all do. We're here. We need to stop this rhetoric and start listening to people and not wait until it's too late. While I was with him, I didn't know he had a problem. I didn't see anything wrong. You know, we constantly hear that. So we got to look out for each other and we got to see. First thing I see when I see my board members or I see people, are you alright? Is everything okay? And if they smiling, I make a joke and they laughing, I know they alright. I made their day. I'm here. All you got to do is call. There were times when I used to go to Hope Garden and people were a little upset, and I go to the senior old lady and says, is there something wrong? She says, yeah, now that I have you here. I says, my lights went out and I don't know how to fix the clock on my cable box. And you put it for them, and it's the best thing in the world. And they're your best friends and they see you. And they say, hey, that's the guy that put the box on for me. They think it was something hard, you know? But these are seniors that are alone by themselves. Their kids are grown up, they moved out. Or some of them are not here, and they're on their own, and they want to live here, because they only know of this. So we got to, we got to take care of our family and take care of all of us, regardless of who it is. I also, on Tuesday, the 15th, that day, there was a rally at 10:30, Congresswoman Neela Velazquez's office, trying to save my social security. I need my check. We can't keep cutting our checks, man. I work hard for it. Everybody pays for that. So we got to support our congressperson and fight for our money. Because y'all all going to get one time, hit that age, and y'all want that money to be there, right? So what's good for the geese is good for the gander. So thank you, Congresswoman. She set up a protest on 790 Flushing Avenue by the Social Security Office. No more online applying. No more on the phone, because there ain't nobody going to answer three or four hours. They want to see you, they don't want to make sure you're dead. So if your grandmother's 110 years old and bedridden, you got to lug her. And she got to make an appointment. And they're closing all the offices down. So everyone that got 100, because I met this old man, 100 years old, he had to walk in there because he needed to fix the problem. And he said, this is ridiculous. 100 years old. So we got to make sure we support them and help our people. 6:30, 83 Precinct Council. I was there with the captain. Also at the, Inspector, I'm sorry. I keep calling, because I'm used to calling them, you know, it's like my son, but Inspector. I got to keep saying Inspector. Thank you. And today, Bishop Clark was the 83 Precinct Clergy Meeting. Bishop Clark, he gave me a preach of the Bible. And it was, it was good to know that he said he wants to pray for me. And I was wondering if something was happening with me, because I even asked him, you, am I going to die? And he starts laughing, he says, no. He says, because we want you to pray, because we know you're doing a lot of work for us. And we want to make sure we give you the power to do your work. And we want to make sure that you're constantly here to do your work, because things are going on and we don't know. We want you God to serve you and help you in any way you can. And I says, well, I have to be a certain denominator? He says, no. I says, I got to give 10% of what I own? He said, no. I said, oh, no, I'm just crossing my teeth and down my eyes, because I don't want to commit to something. And he said, no, I just wanted to pray for you and make sure of that. And he gave me a prayer and I thanked him. So we all need a little prayer. Sometimes we think, we may not think people are listening. But we are, but we want to make sure that our people understand. And also, today, they nominated, they gave an award and they let me tell you, Inspector, I can't give you a lunch. Or, you know, Inspector had lunch for the staff downstairs. Breakfast. He gave the employees breakfast that are doing the reports, downstairs, the police report. He gave them all breakfast, and he gave a person an award that's been there 23 years doing a lot of work, a civil service employee. So it was great that the inspector knows the people that are in the bottom. They may need a little lift and encourage them to go. So thank you, Inspector. We appreciate you. And that's my report.
Any questions for Mr. Camacho? Anyone on Zoom? Alright, we will keep it moving. Please come up. Yeah. Yes, everyone else who has not helped themselves already to a meal, please help yourself to some dinner this evening.
Mr. Camacho, the church that you were speaking of that closed down, are you speaking of the one that's on the corner of Madison and Bushwick?
Yes.
That is closed down?
They're not closed yet, their last service will be in June. I have more information under my report as to what the office has been doing to support them.
Thank you.
Other church that Mr. Camacho referenced, where there was a flea market inside of it, is on Cornelia and Bushwick.
I'm sorry, and the reason why they're not in there, because the buildings department removed them because the roof is falling. There's a lot of problems with the... Yes, with the roof, so we wanna make sure that, that's another... And, and it's, that eleven, uh, Bushwick Methodist is state? State, uh...
State landmark.
State landmark, it's not city landmark. It's state landmark, it's not city landmark. So they can... They can sell it.
Yes.
Yes, they can. State landmark, but there's, there's something that they gotta go through the Attorney General. I'm not too sure what's the outcome, maybe Celeste get more info, but I know that they indicated that it'll be a hard trail, but since it's falling down anyway, so...
Speak to this during my report, but we have about five items before that, so I wanna keep it moving. Um, we also have our election, so we're gonna go right into that now. Um, our nomination committee members are here, we have ballots as well if we need them. And we also have a special guest returning this evening.
Hello, everybody, good to see you guys. Thank you for having me back to emcee the board elections again. Miss you all very much, miss the community board, very different, I have I've not joined the one, I moved to the Bronx, I haven't moved, I haven't joined the new one, but I've, I've attended some meetings. Very different issues, um, they're all about trees, nothing about, uh, housing, any of that, but if a tree gets cut down, it's riots in the street. Alright, let's get started. Okay? For the first one, we have, for the chairperson, Robert Camacho is the only nominee who has accepted. But, uh, according to the rules, I have to ask, are there any nominations from the floor? And a second time, any nominations from the floor? Alright, third and final chance is just the warm-up. Third and final chance, any nominations from the floor for board chairperson, 25, 26?
Alright, it is uncontested, our recording secretary will cast the one vote for Mr. Camacho.
So move.
Felix Savio, I got the vote for Mr. Camacho.
Thank you for allowing me to represent this community board, it's, it's I'm honored that you guys see, you know, see something in me that, that, that I myself didn't think. But um, it's hard, being a leader is not easy. And, and addressing, you know, my passion for this community all my life. And seeing how hard it was, my dad that didn't know how to read or write. And the struggles. But um, thank you.
Now, I also wanna shout out Raul, who was nominated but declined his nomination. And I hope you guys will have me back next year, or whatever year, when the term limits kick in, so I can see the nomination fight for that one. I don't think it's actually gonna happen, alright. First vice chairperson, this one, we have two accepted nominations, Raul Rubio and Christian Celeste Tate. Uh, double checking, you guys both still in it? Good? And any nominations from the floor? Make it a three-way race. Alright, second time, any nominations from the floor? And a third, any nominations from the floor? Alright, we got a real vote. Ballots are gonna get passed out by the nominating committee.
Yep. If there are any volunteers from the nomination committee, Mr. Fowler has the ballots, we just need to distribute them to board members. Anyone can help also, you don't have to be on the committee. But yeah, all board members must get a ballot.
Board members, raise your hands, so they can, they can see ya. And put them down when you get your sheet. This is for first vice chairperson. Whatever your sheet says, write it on the back. First vice chairperson. Just write it on the back.
All of the collected ballots, please bring them up here to Mr. Camacho and I. Yeah, do not-
Do not open them, just fold them and put them on top of here.
You do not have to, only the name of the person you are selecting for the position.
It's Raul Rubio or Christian Celeste Tate for first vice chairperson.
Correct. And we're gonna, and we're gonna have them say a few words? I know we, we require, oh, do you know what? Alright, Raul, Raul will go first, Raul? See, we don't do this with elected officials, you gotta bring them in. They need to address why they wanna come in, why they wanna do so, look, we got them on the table, alright?
Well, um, good evening, everybody. Again, my name is Raul Rubio. I've been on this board for twenty-some odd years, I guess at this point, or nineteen, something in that ballpark. Um, I've held several different positions, between second vice chair, treasurer, and, uh, recently picked up the first vice chair. I mean, the people that know me know the work that I do. Um, I will tell you either which way, Christian is a phenomenal person, so either one of us will do a fantastic job in this position. Vote with your hearts, and, uh, yeah. You know, we're here to do the work. I stood shoulder to shoulder with a bunch of you guys tackling, tackling whatever issues it is. The inspector likes me, so, um, that counts for a lot.
Yeah, I'm gonna leave the inspector out of this one. No, I mean, I don't, I don't have all that much more to say, I appreciate that, Raul, like you said, nothing but love and appreciation for him, you can't go wrong with this. We're gonna work together, side by side, either way. Um, we got a lot of work to do, and I've been, you know, said yes to everything that I can. Um, and so this was an easy, easy thing to say yes to, to accept the nomination, because I'm here to do the work alongside each and every one of you. Um, I've been inspired by just about everybody in this room, and have a lot of appreciation for you. Um, and I said yes, because I wanna work with you, and I wanna work for you, and that's about it. Thank you.
Ballots up front? Yep, return all ballots up front over here, return ballots are over here. Yeah, return ballots are between Mr. Camacho and I. You can let them put them down first, yeah. Do we have all of the ballots? Oh. Alright. Going once, going twice. We will now tally the ballots. Christian. I'm also not tallying, so if someone can keep track, okay, perfect, alright. Raul. Christian. Raul. Christian. 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 Raul. 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 Christian. Raul. Christian. Raul. Christian. Christian. Raul. Christian. Raul. Christian. Christian.
Final tallies coming in?
Raul Rubio nine, uh, Christian fifteen, Christian's up.
Congratulations, Christian. Alright, moving on to the second vice chairperson. That's, uh, the two nominees, accepted nominees, two nominees are Milagros Sandoval, who's, I believe, the current second vice chairperson, and Felix Savios, the current recording secretary. Yes? Alright, both have accepted still. Alright, any nominations from the floor, going once? Any nominations from the floor, second time? And a third time, any nominations from the floor? Alright, we got another vote passing out for second vice chairperson. And actually, I think we're gonna have both nominees come up and speak again. So come on up.
Hello, everyone, good evening. My name is Felix Savios. I'm being in the board for so many time, and all the time I try to do the best for my community. Work and, and be voluntary, and anything I can do. So, that's what I wanna say. I be all the time available for my community, thank you.
Good evening, um, thank you for the nomination, I've been the second vice chairperson for the last year, I've accepted the nomination, thank you. Born and raised in Bushwick, still in Bushwick, still fighting the fight. I am here to serve you guys, I am here all day, every day. And may the chips fall where they may, that's it, thanks.
Okay, get those ballots in. And the choices, Milagros Sandoval and Felix Savios for second vice chairperson. Lot of years of meetings.
Felix. Millie. Millie. Felix. Millie. Felix. Millie. 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 Felix. Millie. Millie. Felix. Felix. Millie. 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 And Millie. Okay, sixteen for Millie and six for Felix. Congratulations, Millie. All right, all right. Let me, let me count the papers.
Did everybody vote? Any abstentions?
Sixteen for Millie, six for Felix.
Hmm.
Two. Two ballots are missing. That's twenty-two. We have twenty-four people here. Okay, I mean,
Did you vote?
It's, it's, so it's not gonna change the result, but please return ballots.
Even if they're blank?
Yes. Please, please always return ballots. All right. So, so we will, we will move on. Congratulations to Millie.
Okay, moving on. We're gonna get, by the time we get to the treasurer, we're gonna have this down. Okay, next, recording secretary. We only have one accepted nomination, which is Jerry Valentine. Felix Savios, the current recording secretary has declined. Any change? Still decline. All right. One nomination, two more decline nomination, Raul Rubio, Ben Tucker. Any, any change? Okay, all right. One running unopposed at the moment, but are there any nominations from the floor?
I just have to indicate, so the board member that actually helps with the minutes is Andrew Choi. I will leave that to the board to do with it what they mean.
Okay. Noted. Andrew Choi is the one who does most, a lot of the recording secretary work, helps with the minutes. So are there any nominations from the floor for recording secretary? Andrew Choi has been nominated from the floor. Good thinking. All right, Andrew Choi, who I believe is on Zoom, do you accept or decline that nomination?
I respectfully decline due to like health issues, but I am happy to continue working on the notes.
All right, Jerry Valentine, still, accept?
Ah, yes. Good evening. I do. Yes, this is Jerry.
Okay, running unopposed. All right, I think I have to do a third nomination from the floor. Is there any other nominations from the floor?
Nomination, so Stephanie Anderson just asked if you are on the nomination committee, can't, you can't, and that's correct. You cannot run for a position.
All right, unopposed, Jerry Valentine, who has accepted, I believe, so moved.
Congrats to Jerry. We will have our recording secretary cast the vote.
I, sorry, not yet moved.
We, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Pass the baton.
I got the ball for Jerry Valentine.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the treasurer. We have Jerry Valentine, who I believe cannot be treasurer now, though he accepted the nomination. We have James Stewart, who has accepted. I looked right, but he didn't raise his hand, so it'll share. Stand up so everyone can see you. And, uh, let's see, for treasurer. Two decline nominations, Joanna and Christopher Graham. Any changes in your mind? Okay, any nominations from the floor for treasurer? Felix has been nominated for treasurer. Accept? Accepted. All right, we got two horses. Is there a second nomination from the floor? All right, third chance nomination from the floor. Okay, we're gonna have him come up and speak again. That'll be James Stewart and Felix Savios coming up for treasurer.
Well, James Stewart, thank you so much. I'm humbled by this nomination. And as I think about all of the things that I've been treasurer, organization I've been treasurer in, one thing has always been consistent for me, is that the role of treasurer goes beyond dollars and cents and budget line items, but it really speaks to values. And so being on this community board, one of the things that I have come to see how important these roles are, as it expresses our values to ourselves and to the community. And so I look at this role not just as a title, but just simply as an extension of the values that I share and want to be able to convey and speak on behalf of the community for. Thank you.
Good evening again, Felix Savios. Like I said before, I try to work the more, what I can to the community. And also, I take too serious the board. I try to be pressing all the time, because no matter what, that is voluntary, but we had to assume the responsibility. So I do whatever I can do for my community. Thank you.
All right, I believe everybody has their sheets. Even if you are abstaining, bring your sheet in so we can get to twenty-four.
We need all the ballots up front. If you didn't receive a ballot, please just fill it out up here, so that way we can move along. All right. Felix. Felix. James. 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 Felix. James. Felix. Felix. James. Felix. James. Felix. James. 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 And James. Sixteen for James, seven for Felix. Congratulations to James.
Okay, last but not least, the parliamentarian. We have Joanna Bennett, current parliamentarian, renominated and accepted. And our chairperson, Robert Camacho, also accepted, but is no longer eligible. Christine Malden was accepted, but, or was nominated but declined. Any change? Still declining. Any nominations from the floor? Second time, any nominations from the floor for parliamentarian? All right, third time, any nominations from the floor for parliamentarian? Okay, one, uh, one accepted nomination, Joanna Bennett, and I believe the recording secretary will have to make this vote. I don't know if it's.
I got the ball for Joanna.
All right.
All right, congratulations to the, the new members, or new committee people.
Thank you for helping us, and thank you. We bother you all the time. Now you like doing the work. Where's your son? You gotta put your son on there to do it. Justice Manager's report?
We skipped a few things under your report. So it's the introduction of elected officials. And let's, at the same time, any elected officials, representatives, agency representatives, community-based organizations and businesses, now's the time to come up, name and contact info only. And then on Zoom. And then on Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to introduce yourselves, name and contact info. This is for everyone, elected officials, agency reps, community-based organizations and businesses. Now's the time.
Good evening, good evening. Uh-oh.
Ready?
Jonathan Bancourt here from the Office of Congresswoman Nidia Velazquez, phone number seven one eight five ninety-nine and three six five eight.
Fran from Councilmember Nurse's office. Our number is seven one eight six four two eight six six four.
Hi, everyone. Kimberly Vega from Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez's office. Our number is seven one eight nine six three thirty-one forty-one.
Hello. Hello, my name is Nirvane. I'm with Canowear. Our number is nine one seven four three seven seven two six zero.
I'm Erin Wright from the Borough President's Office. Our number is seven one eight eight oh two thirty-seven hundred.
All right, if there's no one else, oh, on Zoom, Maria, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Maria Valdez from the Office of Senator Julia Salazar. Phone number is seven one eight five seventy-three seventeen twenty-six.
All right, thank you. And now is a report from the eighty-third precinct commanding officer, Deputy Inspector Poggioli.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the invitation this evening. As always, I'm very happy to join everybody here. Um, before I get into the, the presentation, I just want to touch on something that Mr. Camacho, first of all, congratulations, Mr. Camacho. I, I think, you know, I could speak for myself, obviously, and for all agency representatives that we're all very, very lucky that you hold this role in the community board, because, like you said, your purpose is to serve the people here. You bring us your concerns, your issues, and you ensure with your board that they're seen through. But it, but it starts with you always. And, you know, I appreciate your partnership personally. I've always told you that. So Mr. Camacho spoke about the, the loss that we've endured when we had the services for Detective Rodriguez this past Friday over on Central Avenue. And, you know, I'm gonna be reiterating the story a couple of times now. I spoke about it at our community council meeting and our clergy council meeting. But I just want to give my perspective, right, as an attendee to those services, as the precinct commander here in Bushwick. And I've been to, you know, more of these things, right, than we, we wanted to attend, right? We're always in that procession, standing shoulder to shoulder, and looking to my left, and looking to my right, and seeing like, you know, fellow officers in uniform, standing at attention as the family makes their way out from the interior of the church, or whatever the venue is, right, for the denomination of religion, for the, what we're attending. And you could see the hurt, right, always left and to your right. And now, you know, this particular service on Friday, me personally, standing there, right now, I'm looking out in front of me, and I'm seeing the family come out and the friends, and I'm standing there, right, not just attending the service, but I'm standing there as the precinct commander of Bushwick, and I'm seeing the hurt, right, that the community, his friends, his family, the community as a whole, was feeling that day, right, as they made their way up to the casket to drop the flower on top of it as it sat in the rear of the hearse. And, you know, the thought started, that started going through my head is like, at that moment, like, it really didn't matter where you stood, right? Like, we mourned together. He was a member of the service, but he was a member of this Bushwick community, a fabric of this community. And it made me start to think, and, you know, let me preface it with saying this, I think we here within Bushwick, within the A three precinct, we really do set the benchmark for the collective engagement between community and the police department. I really do genuinely believe that. And then as I'm standing at this service on Friday, right, it's only furthering that thought process and like, why should it only be in the times like this where it's okay to kind of feel the same way, right? Like, we're all in mourning, we all had the same look on our faces, and we should be able to share in experiences beyond standing at a funeral service on a rainy Friday morning. And that's the way I saw it, and I kind of just wanted to reiterate that, because that was the thought process that was going through my head at that time. If we could do it then, in that very moment, we could do it at so many different other occasions and events and opportunity as we move forward. So I just wanted to, to put that out there, to what I thought about as I was standing out there this morning. But we'll miss Dave, absolutely, and we're here to support him, right, as a member of this department, but even more so as a member of this community. And we'll be at his family's side going forward, as always, as we are with everybody. So our builder block meetings, you know, we've spoke about that engagement. We want to see now builder block meetings going forward, right? We, we see it as another opportunity, another venue, where we could exchange ideas, where we can increase dialogue, and we could field additional issues and concerns. And kind of to Mr. Camacho's point earlier, right, that may not be something that makes it on its way onto a data sheet, right? If I field a complaint in here, doesn't mean it makes its way to nine one one. It doesn't mean it makes its way to the three with one system, but it's an issue and it's a concern. And, and the additional opportunities that we get to, to document and respond to, to the concerns in the community, we want to push that, right? We want to increase the opportunities that we have for that exchange of ideas. So when I spoke here last month, right, we spoke about our sector Adam was holding their builder block meeting on March twenty-seventh over on Hancock Street. And again, a testament to that message being received, because we had twenty-one attendees at that builder block meeting, you know? And again, like, that's what, exactly what we're looking for. Like, we're seeing that attendance trickle up in, in the right direction, and we want to keep that going forward. And our next builder block meeting is actually gonna be this Thursday, the seventeenth, at six o'clock at Ten Forest Street in Sector Charlie, right? So that's gonna be that area around that Myrtle Broadway, down where Mr. Camacho lives over on Stanhope Street, like that part of the geography of the precinct. So please take note, if you're a resident, if you're a business owner in our Sector Charlie, visit our social media pages. You know, we've even went beyond like the initial flyer distribution that we do on social media, and now we actually post an image of our two NCOs that are assigned to that specific sector with the portion of the precinct that's applicable to the meeting. So please visit our social media page. We have some flyers here today. I know I'm misspelling X last time, if we could start bringing the flyers to this meeting as well. So there are some flyers regarding the builder block meeting. And again, I want to thank you for the attendees for Sector Adam, and let's please continue to have those, see those efforts going forward. So I'm gonna speak our crime numbers, and then I'm gonna pass it to Officer Qualit, because she's gonna speak about two upcoming events we have in the community, and then we are going to open it up for some questions. I know we have some parking issues that want to be discussed, and I know Ms. Anne And I know Ms. Anderson had some questions about that new quality of life program that's been represented in the media recently. So we're continuing and maintaining our crime decreases over the past, over 2025 in this community. You know, we continue to really sit around like that 35% overall annual year-to-date index crime decrease in, in Bushwick. So, you know, like, I, I want to always build perspective on what that means that when you talk about a 35% decrease in overall index crime in the community and in the precinct. So the 83 is what, one of 78 precincts in the city of New York, right? We're five, five geographical boroughs, city of eight and a half million people, which is then divided into 78 precincts throughout the city of New York. And the 83, this community sits in the top five of percentage of annual, uh, percentage of crime decrease for 2025. So out of all 78 commands, all 78 precincts in the city of New York, this one sits in the top five of that perspective. So, you know, something really to, to hold in perspective, right? Because as I just stated, those numbers, we're a tremendous city and to sit in the top five of anything is a positive. And the message continues, we understand that it, it's not done alone. Public safety is what, it's a shared responsibility, a term that I use a lot in this room. And it's because people buy into what the message is that we, the issues have to come to us as, you know, the eyes and the ears of the community. Once those issues are brought to the police department, we could so much more precisely deploy to areas. And we could get in front of conditions before they fester, right? Before they deteriorate any further. And we could head them off and ensure that they don't result in, you know, an even worse, worse condition. But with this decrease that we see, it really gives us the opportunity to what? To really kind of like, really laser focus on what we are still seeing. And if you remember last month in here, I spoke about that apartment scam, right? Where people were purporting to be real estate agents and they were stealing money from people saying, yeah, you know, we have a vacant apartment at this address and they'd arrived there and it was occupied by a family. And then that real estate agent, you know, who, whoever's alleging to be the real estate agent was nowhere to be found. So what I've seen over the previous month, and it isn't a lot of instances, honestly, I read like two reports on this, but it's something that stands out because it involves our elderly population. And it, again, it is scam-driven. And this time is what, um, you know, we define as like a lottery scam. So it works like this. You have a person out on the street and an individual pretending to be, you know, maybe their immigration status or something is in question. And they'll go up to an individual and say, I have this winning lottery ticket, but I'm afraid to cash it because of my immigration status. A second person will approach the group and say, you know what? I have a lawyer friend who could help us out with this. So now there's two people involved on this scam on this, you know, unsuspecting person. But they say, listen, before we go to this person, I'm gonna need some type of collateral from you. So I know that when it's time to split up the proceeds of this lottery ticket, you know, I have something from you to know that I'm gonna see you again. So a person thinks, wow, the opportunity of the lifetime just fell into their lap. They said, no problem. So all right. And this most recent incident, it was, they took this woman for $10,000, right? Not small amounts of money, $10,000 that they took from her and said, okay, we're gonna go meet here on this date and we'll then split up the proceeds of this lottery ticket. And obviously, right, it's a scam. And the, the reason I bring that up, one, I mean, it's a significant, a significant amount of money. And beyond that, like, look who it's targeting. It, it's targeting someone who elderly, you know, like, they may not have their family around them and things like that. They may not have that support system. And they're victimizing this type of person. And what I stated last night is the same thing that I'll state this evening. Is that, you know, that should raise emotion in people. That, that, that should make you want to go out and spread these messages that we speak about in this room, right? I always tell you that if the messages of crime prevention end in this room, then we're really not all doing our part. It really takes effort to go back. And I used the example this morning to go back into the clergies. And I used the example last night as we go back into, you know, our blocks. We have these block groups, these text messages thread, right? We engage our neighbors as we get home every day from work. This is the message we need to spread. You, you'll see it on our social media outlets. But again, we're going to social media. And this is a, a specific type of incident, right, that we recently saw targeted the elderly population, you know? Maybe that social media outreach isn't the best mess ways, right? The best means to reach that population. So that's why I always appeal to everybody who's in front of me. Please take those messages and let's help and educate those who may not have the means to come here and sit in this meeting and hear this message. Because, you know, that's bothersome, very bothersome, when you hear that somebody who put their trust in these two strangers and now out such a significant amount of money. Like I said, I'll pass it over to Officer Koalacheck briefly, and then I'll open it up for some questions.
Good evening, everyone. I won't take up much of your time. My name is Officer Koalacheck. I'm one of the Community Affairs Officers at the 83rd Precinct. I just wanted to touch briefly on some events we have coming up for Easter. We have an Easter egg hunt this Saturday behind 140 Menahan Street. I put flyers over there. There's gonna be candy. It's from 11 till 4:00. There's gonna be candy, music, food. We're gonna have NYPD K-9 come out, NYPD mounted. So it should be a good time. Weather's gonna be nice. So if you guys, you know, have kids, know of kids, your neighbors have kids, please bring them out. And my second announcement is gonna be the return of the 83rd Precinct Summer Youth Enrichment Program. It used to be called the Summer Camp, but now it's the Summer Youth Enrichment Program. It's still the same program. I've had the opportunity of partaking in it the last two years, and it's amazing. I've also put flyers over there. It's $200 per applicant. It's on a first come, first served basis. We are now taking applications. It's Monday through Friday. It's from April 7th to August 27th. And you can contact the Youth Coordination Officers. Their information is on the bottom. If you can't reach them, I'm gonna share our office number. It's 718-574-1697. Thank you.
Um, I'll open it up to any questions now. I know we had a pending one from earlier. I don't know if you want him to reintroduce the question via the microphone and I can answer it.
Hi there, Jason Garcia B4. I think Felix, your original question, and feel free to jump in, was about, you know, maybe a feeling that the 311 complaints that are put in are not always responded to the best, or maybe, or something of that nature. And I've had some positive results and some really good communicating officers. And on more serious issues, I've certainly had like great responsiveness from the precinct. So I appreciate that. You know, and the parking stuff, sometimes it seems like it just gets closed out. Or by the time an officer can come around, the condition is over. You know, I understand it, but I guess just wanted to hear a little bit more about how you respond. Thank you.
Sure. So, you know, obviously, right, the 911 call service is the priority for response. We all understand that, right? Those are in-progress crime jobs and things like that. That 311 system is not funneled through our radio dispatch, right? That comes through a separate program at our desk, right? And then it'll be funneled out to the respective sectors within the precinct. In addition to that, on our department's smartphones, there's actually a 311 application as well that you could open it up and kind of read that basic narrative of what's going on, you know? But we use that 311 system in, in the same way we use that 911 system to really like analyze the reoccurring conditions to where we deploy resources to. And it really marries some of the things we hear in, in this room as well. You know, parking conditions and the complaints are something we field continually, right? We get a lot of complaints regarding derelict vehicles, abandoned vehicles, taking up what? Like legitimate parking spots for legitimate people coming home from work looking to park their vehicles. So it's efforts we make where, you know, you, you may not see always a response looking out the window. It's like, well, you know, that car was there. They never made it there and now it's gone. No, but we could kind of look back now and quantify the data and then pre-deploy, right? So this past month, we actually set up two separate operations. We conducted a, a rotation TOOP, targeting those derelict and abandoned vehicles. And then we engage our auto crime partners into a vehicle parking condition around Central and Chauncey Street. And between those two operations, 30 vehicles were removed off the streets of Bushwick, right? So like, you know, you may not see like, all right, that car pulled away, the police never made it here. But, you know, rest assured that those reoccurring recidivist conditions are targeted operations. But we could get that bang for our sake. And 30 vehicles is 30, right? That's 30, that's one a day off that average of the past month. That's no longer there. 30 more spots opening up. You know, we're furthering what we're doing with the fire hydrant parking. I told this story as well this morning. And, you know, what do we hear in this room as well, right? Fire hydrant parking, things like that, vehicles blocked, like, we understand the gravity of that situation. And, and we deploy accordingly. And what I see when I look out and say, okay, how are the officers responding from the message that we're getting from forums like this? You know, last Friday, daytime hours on Cooper Street, vehicle parked on a hydrant occupied by two individuals, officers engaged the vehicle, right? They, they start their basic line of questioning. And what does that interaction lead to? That interaction leads to two arrests and a loaded 25 caliber pistol off of something that started off of what? Something that's come out of this room, right? Like the onus and push to get cars off of hydrants. And in that particular situation, now listen, does every interaction on blocked hydrant result in that? Of course not. But this particular one, which tells you that the message is being heard, that they went out, they engaged, and what does it result in? One more firearm off the streets by getting out of the car on a vehicle blocking a hydrant. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Stephanie Anderson, CP4 member. Police Commissioner Tish, on the news, she stated that she was going to put together a super 311 team. Can you let us know, what does that cover?
Sure. So actually what it is, and it's something that's gonna be started under the Chief of Department's Office, is a new division in the department called the Quality of Life Division. And what this Quality of Life Division is now going to, they've rolled it out in a pilot project so far. It's in five commands citywide in a PSA. And then slowly but surely, as like they work out the kinks through the pilot project, they're gonna roll it out into the, the patrol boroughs throughout 2025. But pretty much what it is, is dealing with a lot of what we talk about in all these venues, right? Like quality of like, like, even if I could say something like crime is down 35%, but sometimes there's those street level conditions that still make it seem like there's a level of disarray out there, right? Like, and that's what it is, like perspective versus reality. So what this new model is, they're gonna be rebranding personnel within precincts into what is referred to as a Q team. It's gonna be sector-specific. It's gonna involve offices that, a traffic component, you know, a neighborhood coordination officer component, they're gonna go out and form these Q teams, which in essence, they're gonna be liaising with city agencies to go out and address, right? Some types of unlicensed vending, derelict vehicle parking. You know, whatever the community decides is the most pressing quality of life conditions, and they're liaising with the city agencies. So we'll see as they make their way through the pilot, pilot project to see what the final product looks like. But it is something that's gonna be rolling out citywide throughout 2025.
And how can we make our needs known, that just by calling 311?
Yeah, 911, 311, forums such as this, right? Like, that's what it's all about. It, it's gonna take data that's like readily available through those already reporting mechanisms like 911 and 311. And then it's gonna incorporate what's brought up into forums like this. Exactly what kind of what Mr. Camacho said earlier, like, how do we now incorporate what we hear here, right? Or when individuals reach out directly to Community Affairs or directly to their NCO officers? Like, how do we incorporate that into the data? And that's what this program is now gonna do. It's gonna be taking what we hear at these community forums and incorporating that to the data that's already readily available. And then you could really start highlighting like, okay, these are our top three or top five conditions within our area that need to go out and be addressed.
So should we still be, um, uh, communicating with our NCO?
It's, the communication remains the same. Absolutely. Yep.
They will relay that much.
Correct. You know, if you, if you call 311 for an issue today, call 311 for an issue tomorrow. Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Just for my colleague over there. When you call 311, well, cars, if you don't know that, they can't do anything until those cars are ticketed. So when you call 311, the call does go to the 83rd, and they do get it. Cause I call quite often. And they do get it. So until that car is ticketed, they can't do anything about it. But if your NCOs are there, they happen to be there, they call and they could, they have something in their phone. They could see who that car belongs to. And they did it. And they found out who the car belonged to at 10 o'clock at night. They went and they rang that person's doorbell and told them they had to come out and move their car. But they were not to, and they stayed there until that person actually came out and moved their car. So, you know, the guys that do it in their job, they were wonderful.
Now, listen, it doesn't always have to end in enforcement, right? We just want the condition corrected. And if that involves knocking on the door, say, hey, you're kind of partially blocking this driveway, and the person comes out and moves the vehicle and self-corrects the behavior, there's really no reason to write the summons at that point, as long as the condition is corrected.
I, I just have a, a, a concern, a question. Is it, is it because they're creating this a task force or whatever it is they're creating or for quality of life issue? Because it's not high priority? And only because people feel that the quality of life issue is concerning or creating a, a mechanism that's not conducive with what the police department falls in? Because why reinvent the wheel? If you're doing it here and you're creating a, 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 a quality of life patrol, and you're doing that already. So what is the, what is? So what they're, what is it they're trying to do and how is it they're trying to do to erase the specific that, that nothing's going on? Or is it gonna be blank completely, you know? Or maybe because quality of life is making the percentage look that you guys ain't doing your job? You know, what, why are you building, why are they re-inventing the wheel? I, I didn't understand the narrative in regards to quality of life issues.
So what I'll say to you on that, Mr. Camacho, you're right. The 83 precinct does a lot of things, right? I wholeheartedly agree with you. And, um, that's because of this, right? Because there's will, people willing to profess their concerns. And there's an entity on the other end that's willing to be responsive to it. So now, you know, if they're gonna kind of fine-tune that approach through areas throughout the city, like, that, that's not a bad thing. But I wholeheartedly agree with you, you know, the conceptually of what you're saying, that the liaising with, whether it's parks, whether it's DEP, whether it's Department of Buildings, a lot of that gets done here every day in, in Bushwick. I wholeheartedly agree with that statement.
Thank you. Anyone else? On, on Zoom?
Yes, quickly, um, just to follow up on the 311 discussion earlier. I'm not sure if all 311 complaints or only certain ones are routed through the precinct. But just to respond to what some of the community folks have told us before about, you know, having made complaints and feeling like, once we've looked them up on the open data, they're not present. So is that because somebody has made a judgment? You know, are they not formatting the complaint correctly? Or has someone made a judgment call in terms of triaging that to say like, this is not necessary to be recorded?
Well, they'll start it right at the overhead of the 311 system. And then that will funnel it out to the applicable city agency.
So for noise, for example, in the, in the context of permits and licensing for noisy venues or something like this, would noise be something?
Yeah, well, we, we field noise complaints, you know, commercial locations, sometimes residential locations and things. Absolutely, noise complaints come to us. And then, you know, we'll, we'll take a look at it. We'll engage. Or, you know, if it happens to be a commercial location, right? Obviously, the Office of Nightlife, the DEP, and then we'll go out and again, like, building off what he say, like that multi-agency response to, to what we're seeing out there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything we can tell folks if they're, I mean, if there's, if they're making complaints that aren't appearing in the open data portal, is there any reason for that, that we can advise them to do that better?
That I wouldn't be able to, like, really kind of like, why isn't showing up in the data? But if you have a location that you feel like could use an additional follow-up, you know, like, you could pass it along to community fairs, and then we'll funnel it out to the NCOs and have them take a look. Absolutely. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other? Not? Inspector, thank you. Oh, wait, wait. I want to go on a whisper.
Captain, about residential noise complaints, like lauter in the building?
So, you know, residential noise complaints, a little different than a commercial noise complaint, right? Like, if you're internal complaining about like noisy neighbors and things like that, that might not be a criminal matter, something that may have to be addressed through like the landlord or the super of the building. Yeah.
And also, a lot of people, people think that that they go in private buildings and do, or or go down and know the landlord is supposed to take care of that PD don't go on that, because that's the case everybody wanted to do, walk downs and check out. So they don't, they don't do that. I know Nitres, as you know, is no longer, Nitres is private entity, and they don't do verticals, but they do have on the, on the Nitre grounds.
Hi. Thank you, Inspector, for the information. My question's just quick. I know this is still rolling out, but I'm curious if there will be any distinction between members of the Q team and regular patrol officers in terms of like, standard issue like outfit or anything essentially like, will these Q teams, since they are low level crimes, right? We're talking about like parking things here and, you know, dumping stuff like that. Will all these officers still be armed in the same way? I'm just curious.
Oh, I mean, yeah, they're gonna be attired the same way, in the same way like our neighborhood coordination officers, our traffic officers, our youth officers, it'll all be the regular. And there may be a breakdown to, you know, scheduling, right? They may have steady days off, they may split the tours or things like that of the hours of operation. But I imagine like, once they figure it all out, like, they'll be in a forum like this to introduce themselves, and, you know, just the traditional ways of rolling out a new program. But, you know, like, I don't want to get away from that that initial point, like, I think it's just fine tuning an approach. And as much as I spoke previously about relationships, right, community partnership and relations that we have this in this precinct in this community, I really do feel like the quality of life responsiveness is another thing that sets a benchmark. And I can't see too much of a deviation from the operating procedure, right? You bring us a complaint right now, it's gonna get funneled out to appropriate officers and go get addressed. Same way it will be in the future. Now, whether whether those officer are specifically titled as within a precinct, that's yet to be seen. But, right, the matter will be concluded and resolved correctly. And that's what matters at the end of the day.
But we, anyway, well.
So I have a situation on Hart Street between Wykoff and Irving. There's a supermarket there that a truck decides to do their deliveries and stop in the middle of the block. No one can leave. They have a loading dock on the other side. They refuse to do this. It's been going on for years. And unfortunately, we have to call police, and sometimes it takes a long time. By then, all the cars are reversing back on Wykoff. It just becomes ridiculous. I don't know.
A schedule for the deliveries?
All day, all day. And then we have the construction that's going on the new building in Hart Street between Wykoff and Irving. There's a new construction. So they have the petitions almost taking half of the block. It's just, it's chaotic there. It's dangerous. I don't know if you guys.
So we'll definitely take a look at the traffic condition that is created, and then maybe we can engage some of our partners into if the scaffolding's closing an issue on the block that's enhancing or, you know, adding to that traffic related condition there.
Okay, just the last question is, and also in my, in Hart Street, a lot of funny characters knocking on the doors, disguising themselves as different people just to get in the building to get packages, all night, all day. And it's, if I would have to call the cops every minute, just to...
Well, definitely call, definitely call, because, listen, package theft is something we speak about in this room a lot, is something that we deal with a lot. We've made several, several notable arrests over the past couple of months with package thefts. But I need that, you know, that's those are calls we need. We need to get those officers out there and engaging those people that are trying to make their way into residential buildings. It is, it is, but I'll tell you what, like, sooner or later, as those cases continue to build, you have the criminal justice system that is able at some point in time, right, to now look towards custody status. And we, we've seen it, we've seen it over, you know, we had a local burglary pattern over down in like our Sector Boy area that resulted in a couple arrests. And the first time around, right, it was two individuals arrested together, one was released, one was remanded into custody. Fast forward a week or so later, that person that was released, re-offended, right, was caught a second time now, and now he's remanded into custody. So the calls come in, right? We obtain that probative video surveillance, we make identifications, we make the apprehension, and then we liaison with the district attorneys often say, hey, you know, this person has re-offended, these are the time, places, and occurrences that he has offended, and we make the request for bail to be set on an individual.
Thank you, Inspector, but we want to make sure also that if you need manpower, that we can continue serving you, because if they're doing a quality team, that they don't take from the resources that you have, and make sure that the officers that are there, that are gonna be in the quality, knows the community, because sometimes you get new officers here and come with different narratives and different ideas. So that's up to us to put our Ts and not our Is, and let them know that we're here to support them, not here for this. So we gotta work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Macho. Thank you very much.
District manager?
So I'm already getting some looks, and I'm hearing some sighs. It is eight fifty-four, folks, eight fifty-four. So my gift to you all this evening is to forego my report. I will save the update on the church for new business. And I'd also like to strongly encourage all committee chairs to provide a high level overview. Everyone gets the reports, everyone can read at their leisure. Bullet points, please, please summarize your reports this evening, starting with Miss Spellen. Kick us off.
Hi, Dan. This is going to be quick, as Camacho said, we didn't have enough people for our meeting, so we didn't have a quorum, so we didn't take care of any business. I just want to report that we had two fires within Bushwick, one on April ninth at three oh nine Evergreen Avenue, a five-story building. There were no injuries reported. The other one was April twelfth at one thirty Palmetto Street, another five-story building. Again, no injuries reported.
Let's keep it moving. Next, economic development, housing and land use.
Hi, Anne Gynney, housing and land use. Last, last meeting, we had a couple people from HPD come, and what they did is explain to us the changes that happened in the city of yes proposal at the city council level after we had gone through it, which we did with, you know, in pretty good detail, and we all voted on it. Just, again, they're good bullet points on the notes, so I don't even have to go into much of it. But things like landmarks, campus infill, that's something we had talked about, and how to make sure that co-ops, co-op buildings, there's tools to help them make repairs, because a lot of the old co-ops are from the seventies, and they need new roofs, new everything, and they struggle because of the limited rent. So it's, they're trying to problem solve on that. I firmly, I heartily recommend, again, they're really good notes, not by me, and thank you, Office. And then finally, on April second, did a quick site visit with Celeste Camacho and Councilmember Nurse to the, the site, the Eastern Parkway site, to talk to the developer, look at, you know, what's out there. And they committed to an ongoing community engagement process with us to figure out what the sort of amenities are. Thank you very much.
And just one quick point of information, it was council land use, and thank you to the council members, and not HPD, but thank you, Anne. Next, let's keep it moving. Environmental protection, transportation, sanitation, and parks and rec.
Thank you very much. I'll keep it quick. We met on March twenty-fourth, and we had two, sorry, this is the environmental protection, transportation side. I'll let Ben come up about the park side. So we met on March twenty-fourth. We had two, two presentations, one from the No North Brooklyn Pipeline Alliance presenting on their campaign to close down the Liquid Natural Gas Facility in Greenpoint. It's not in our district, but we are in their evacuation route. And so some concerns about the safety of that facility are leading some folks in the community to contribute to this campaign. I'll let you read about it in the committee report. But essentially, we decided to table that, that motion to provide them with a letter of support, because they're gonna follow up with some more information that we felt we needed in order to create, to decide whether or not to create that letter. Then we had a presentation from the Legislative Director from Councilmember Holden's office, presenting on Intro six oh six, which would create a licensing system for e-bikes and mopeds. Again, I'll let you read about the conversation, but I think the committee provided some really valuable feedback to the council members' office. We had a pretty substantial conversation about the, the policy, and some concerns about what enforcement might look like. And those are some of the same concerns that both of our city council members have listed in their decision not to sign on to that legislation. But it was a good conversation, and appreciate them coming out. So ultimately, no recommendations from environmental protection, transportation, or sanitation.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Ben Tucker, Parks Chair. This is the same meeting from Monday the twenty-fourth. The committee is recommending the following. We had the following parks permit applications. Bushwick Sports and Recreation, they requested Thomas Boylan Park, Monday through Friday, five to eight, Saturday, Sunday, eight to eight. Bushwick Playground, Tuesday, Friday, and Saturday, six to eight, sorry, Tuesday and Friday, six to eight, Saturday, eight to six. They want Green Central Knoll, Monday through Friday, six to eight. Saturday and Sunday, Green Central Knoll, eight to six. And they want Hope Ball Field, Monday through Friday, five to eight thirty, Saturday and Sunday, eight to nine. Soccer Super Kids, applied for Hector Playground, Monday through Friday, six to eight, Saturday and Sunday, eight to six. And Super Kids applied for Bushwick Playground, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, six to eight, Sunday, ten to seven. Those are all of our recommendations. Everything else, check the committee report.
Can I, can I, I have, I have a concern, our specs and the borough, and, and our commissioner, we don't go past nine, nine PM, nine thirty PM.
This, this is for the hope application? It's still eight thirty PM, Monday through Friday.
At nine PM, it says here.
Eight, eight to nine, Saturday, Sunday, eight to nine.
Yeah, but our permits, our, our specs on our sheets only go to eight.
Oh, that was the, so I left that note on the sheet that, that they had filed with Parks until eight thirty for Hope Ball Field.
So they're allowing, our parks allowing them to have playtime from nine to nine thirty?
Are we?
We're gonna open the door, because we normally, we had that, we had that specs for years. And I, I wanted to speak to Parks because that wasn't, that wasn't on our specs. That's what I mean when I'm saying, we created criterias in regards to play hours, which is two hours each playtime, if you see the box, and it's been like that over ten to fifteen years. Never have anyone eight thirty to nine thirty? Never, border of order, no, this is the boards, this is the boards, this is the board. No, 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 this, this is board conversation. Never at night, never, if the meeting, if we're not, we're not, if you want, if the committee wants to change that, then they have to go change it through the Parks Department, because we submit that form to Parks Department, and it only has to eight PM.
If, if I may, if I may, to help us get out of here, not an hour from now, but in ten or twenty minutes. So what I will suggest, it's not gonna go back to committee, because we have to submit this, the season's gonna start soon. But my suggestion, if Parks and PD will allow it, then the committee should make a decision contingent on that. Again, I will repeat, if it is permissible from the Parks Department and the NYPD, then I would strongly suggest that the committee allow it. That is a stipulation. However, if either of those do not allow it, that is what I would make the decision based off of. Is that fair?
And, and we want to be very, very, very careful. There was a, there was a stabbing in the neck, the officers left here on the playfield. I'll show you video. There's been issues in the park. I'll show you video. You start nine o'clock, eight thirty. It's being recorded. I'm letting y'all know, Parks is not, I'm keeping y'all noticed.
Okay, so then I would add that we'll change our recommendation. Well, well, so let's change our committee recommendation, then, to be contingent upon PD and Parks.
And that'll be discussed during recommendations.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Good job, Ben. All right, let's keep it moving. Next, next, next. Be ready, be on deck.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You have an agenda?
Good evening, everybody. I will try to go quickly. This is in reference to permits and licensing, which met on April eighth. We had four applicants. One withdrew, so I won't be going over that one. We don't need to vote on that one this evening. One is Los Sabores de Mitierra Bakery on two seventy-six Knickerbocker Avenue. This establishment has come before the committee, before they made some amendments, and once again, did not have the proper documentation. We originally voted not in favor to support this application. However, it's my understanding they have since submitted the proper documentation, so we're probably going to change that recommendation in favor. Sorry, it sounds so loud when you're right next to it. Okay. Number two is Sound and Bar Restaurant at fifteen forty-one Myrtle Avenue. This is the applicant that withdrew their application, so we don't need to talk about that one. Number three is two fifty-four Irving, which is a pizza establishment that was taking over a prior pizza restaurant. Their hours of operation of alcohol service fell outside our stipulated hours. They wanted to do four AM every single night of the week. We recommended that they resubmit an application with our recommended hours of operation, which is to say, Sunday through Thursday until twelve AM, Friday and Saturday until two. They were going to think about it, but did not provide an amended application. So we had voted to support them if they did provide that documentation, which they did not do. Finally, we have the Johnsons at three sixty-nine Troutman Street. We really spent the bulk of the meeting on this. This is a bar tavern on Troutman between Irving and Wykoff, and they were submitting an application for expansion onto municipal property, which basically means this is for the outdoor dining program, sidewalk cafes and roadway cafes. It's of note, this is probably the first of many applications that'll be coming our way. It goes first through our Transportation Committee, and they look at the actual structure of the outdoor dining facility. And then it comes to us for more of the permits and licensing part of it. So we had a robust conversation, because we had several people from the community who were there. One was a public member of CB four, who sort of attested to the noisiness of this particular establishment in their outdoor area. They want to have three tables in a sidewalk cafe and three in their roadway cafe area. And the, the main problem, I mean, there's quite a lot of problems that were mentioned, including rats and urination, things like this. But also, what happens is that regardless of when the establishment closes down the shed, there are quite a lot of people who just sort of hang out there. So we talked about ways to possibly address this. And one idea was to make a recommendation that there was some sort of enclosure, so that that would prevent that type of behavior. I believe Kim followed up with DOT, who said that we were able to make such a recommendation, just asked us to keep in mind that the cost associated with that. And because I think this is a newish concept, they're, they're updating their regulations on a rolling basis. So things might change. And I think that is basically it, other than to say that our next meeting, we're looking at finally voting on a good neighbor policy, which is very much in line with what Christian had mentioned earlier in terms of the responsible development policy, kind of similar idea for permits and licensing. And that is all.
So mine is very brief. Shape Up Bushwick will be on Thursday, June fifth, at Irving Square Park. We have a wonderful theme, Bushwick Fit. We have a wonderful theme, Bushwick Fit, Stronger Roots, Stronger Bodies. And so we're excited about that. Our color is Royal Light Blue. We had our first meeting on 3/27. Our next meeting, our next planning meeting will be next Thursday, April 24th at 1:00 PM. You have the report, and so we will table a more comprehensive report to next month.
We're setting precedent, folks, tonight. Now we know we can do it. Let's keep it up. All right, we're on to recommendations, starting with housing and land use. And I just had two notes in reference. I, I wanted to just flag, I didn't mention this earlier due to time, but the City of Yes modifications, just taking that into consideration. There was a carve out for small and shared housing. So we may want to cross-reference with the city council to see if, if it still needs to be included, or if we can somehow put an asterisk there. And then I just had one other note for the preamble. In addition to like the Bushwick Community Plan, some of the other publications that we've referenced, including the Bushwick BOA, the Brownsfield Opportunity Area Study, I think would also be helpful. Is it, Anne, do you want to mention the recommendation?
Yeah. So the committee's recommendation, which, again, we weren't able to vote on, is to approve the responsible development policy as articulated tonight and in your packets.
We have a motion. Do we have, do we have a motion? We didn't motion. Joanna Bennett, I see your hand. Is there, is there second Barbara Jackson? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. All right. Next, we have Parks and Rec. Does anyone need Ben to review? Do you want to, do we, just, you want to, you want paraphrase?
But Parks recommendation, and I'm gonna add the caveat, Parks recommendation is to approve the Parks Permits contingent on PD and Parks Department being okay with the extra hours at Hope Ball Field.
Okay. Eliseo made the motion. James Stewart, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Stephanie Anderson abstains? Oh, opposed. Okay, just, yep. Anyone else opposed? Before I move on. Any other abstentions? All right, motion still carries. Thank you, everyone. And permits and licenses?
Do you need to make a motion to change the previous recommendations, or can I just on the fly do them?
But, yeah, I mean, the only one that changes is like the withdrawal, right?
There was the one that we had that submitted additional documentation.
And the document?
276 Knickerbocker. Okay.
You just modify, yeah.
Okay, so.
Amend it, yeah, amend it.
Los Sabores de Mitierra, 276 Knickerbocker. I think we're changing our recommendation to vote in favor of supporting this application. Number two is 254 Irving, which did not submit additional documentation, so that would be not in favor. And then finally, The Johnsons with outdoor space. I believe it was, the recommendation was to vote in favor.
There was, was that a motion for a blanket? James Stewart, sec, wait, second by Felix Ceballos for a blanket? We just, this is just for a blanket, folks. It's just for a blanket. Let me just finish the blanket, and then we can address anything else. This is just for a blanket. This is not for the actual recommendation. So James Stewart made a motion for the blanket. Felix made a second. All in favor for a blanket?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed a blanket vote? Okay. Anyone else opposed to a blanket vote? Anyone else abstains from a blanket vote? Okay. Go ahead. What is, what needs to be clarified? Mr. Camacho?
I need to clarify, the open space, we had spoke to DOT with our liaison. They do not close that because that's under, they would have to change the whole, you can, you can recommend it, but they're not going to. They said that they pay for that. But what we were trying, that, when we met in with the DOT, they stated that they don't know, we requested, who's gonna enforce when it's open, and they're no longer open, and they leave, and people in there hanging out and drinking, because it's not being closed. Because they said, you can make a recommendation them to close it, but that's cost money that's gonna come to them. And a lot of them are not gonna do it because they're paying the money as it is to do it. So they're gonna leave it the way it is. So what we were saying is what's gonna happen when people complain that they're hanging out, and the owner can't get the guys out of there when he closed at ten? And there was an issue with that, and they said that they gotta get more information on it.
That sounds like it may be a job for the PD's new Quality of Life team.
Woohoo! Sounds good.
All right. Anyone else have questions about the permits and licenses recs? Anyone like to make a motion on the recommendation? Okay. So we already did the blanket vote. This would be, do you support, support? Okay, so Anne, Anne makes the motion to support the committee's recommendation. Second is Eliseo Ruiz. All in favor? Any opposed? I need to, okay, okay. Any, any, okay, Joanna opposed? Anyone else opposed?
Alvina Davis.
We already have a second. I need, hold on, hold on. Let me just, let me check people. Okay, so wait, so Camacho opposes? Okay. And then on Zoom, Alvina?
Yes, opposed.
Opposed or abstained?
Opposed.
Okay, opposed. Okay, one moment. Okay. All right. Anyone else opposed? I have Joanna, Mr. Camacho, and Alvina Davis.
Aye, Zee, Navoa, opposed.
Okay, Zuma opposes. Anyone else? Did I see another? Please say names. I'm, I'm taking notes so I can just document it a little bit faster. Okay. So I have added to that list, Zuma and Joanna. Anyone else opposed? I see no other hands. I see no one on Zoom. Any abstentions? Okay, one moment. So Raul, Miss Spellen. Now we have to, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, motion still carries. Thank you, everyone. And I believe that concludes our recommendations this evening. If I did not miss anything. All right, we can move on to old business. Any old business, going once, going twice? I see no old business. I see no hands on Zoom. New business? I will keep this brief. I was invited to a meeting at the Bushwick United Methodist Church on the corner of Madison and Bushwick Avenue. I did not know what kind of meeting I was walking into. I thought the church was aware that it was a financial difficulty, and we could find a way to potentially connect them to some city programs that may help with that. It is, it is not that situation at all. The leadership of the Methodist, you know, congregation has made decisions without the church itself. There are a lot of folks that mean very well, but they don't necessarily have a dedicated leader that wants to step up. I called the Congresswoman's office. I called the District Attorney's Office. I called pretty much everyone that same day. I've been in communication with the Mayor's Office. Some of you may know Pastor Monroe's. He is the ongoing faith-based initiative leader for the mayor. I'm in the process of trying to connect them to him. And in addition to that, making sure that they know what steps they need to take. Mr. Camacho was correct. The Attorney's General Office has a faith-based charities and nonprofits unit. So they need to follow up to find out if, if this is going in a direction where they're trying to sell the church without telling anyone, it needs to be flagged for that office. But otherwise, this is an ongoing situation. We are doing what we can to support. And hopefully, between the stakeholders that we've identified, you know, community members that really care, they may not be church members, you know, some of the trustees of the church, and then also other stakeholders who have a family history of attending the church, we are doing our best to support it. And I will leave that there, and I will forego the other items I was gonna mention for the sake of time. Any other new business, or any questions on the church? Going once, going twice? All right. Announcements, a minute and a half. A minute. Do we, do you want to make a motion for a minute? Barbara makes a motion for a minute, and Zach seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. So everyone making an announcement. Now you know, one minute tonight, we will be timing you. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, Bushwick Sports and Recreation, 439 World Center, 347, 388, 8271. We, we, we've launched Bushwick Sports and Recreation, right? I have put $20,000 out of my pocket. We're gonna have a payroll of 32 people and counting. We are not some league out of a basement trying to make a cheap dollar on the, on the summer. Okay? Those stabbings, they happen late at night. Mr. Camacho and me and the, and the City Councilwoman were there, closing those parks with the precinct. He knows that. So unless Ben Tucker, who's gonna be a, a coach, and Christian Tate is gonna be a coach, are gonna get drunk there after the games late and stab each other, I don't think you guys have nothing to worry about. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Yeah, baby.
That needs to follow up. I need to follow.
Hi, everyone. Kimberly from Councilmember Gutierrez's office. So the Department of Finance sent tax lien letters to homeowners. If anyone needs further assistance with their tax lien letters, we will have a tax lien event on April 29th at our office at 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM, where you can talk to members of DEP and Department of Finance. We're hosting a decarbonization workshop where homeowners can learn how to make the residential building more energy efficient and in compliance with local law 97. This event will be on May 6th at 6:00 PM, and it will be at Cuff's new location at 280 Star Street. Due to a lot of complaints last year, we requested a cap on noise permits at Maria Hernandez, and we're just waiting to hear back. There are two events on April 26th at Maria Hernandez. One is the dog run cleanup. It got rescheduled due to rain, so it will start at 10 and end at 1. The other event is the street tree care event that will be happening as well. It starts at 10. And there's a Breathe Easy workshop where we will be learning about ways to have cleaner air and lower energy bills. This will be on April 22nd, Earth Day, at 6:00 PM at Bushwick Library on 340 Bushwick Ave. That's it. Thank you.
Good evening, good evening. Congratulations to the new board. My name is Jonathan, here representing Congresswoman Edie Velazquez. Thank you for shortening our time even more. Let me try to do what I can in a minute. Yesterday, the Congresswoman held a press conference. Thank you, Mr. Camacho, for coming out. Outside, the Social Security Office located on Flushing Avenue, she stood with our neighbors, our organizations, our advocates, to stand up to President Trump and President Musk, and tell them that the 83,000 people that rely on Social Security in our district deserve that money. That's money you guys work for. And it's money that not only our seniors that work all their lives, but people who are disabled, that they desperately rely on. She's gonna, she'll continue to call out the administration for cutting over 7,000 federal workers from the Social Security Administration and planning even more cuts, all to pay for $5 trillion in tax cuts to Elon Musk and the ultra wealthy. Next, I just want to say, earlier this month, the Congresswoman sent a letter to the Trump Administration, because they announced the closure of five regional Headstar Offices, one of them being here in New York. The Congresswoman led her colleagues in a demanding answers for the closure. We have office information in the back. Feel free to call our office at 718-599-3658. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Erin from the Borough President's Office. Four quick things from Borough Hall. It's graduation season, so if there are schools, administrators, anyone who wants to nominate students for an award from the Borough President, that deadline is May 29th at 5:00 PM. The form is available on our website. The BP is also trying to do all he can in helping those who are facing deed theft. So we're hosting a Protecting Your Property Estate Planning Workshop on April 22nd at 12, from 12 to 6:30. So anyone who needs assistance with legal documents, living wills, statutory power of attorney, there will be folks there to help out with any of that documentation. On April 28th, we're hosting a day of panels around planning for Brooklyn's climate future. So this will be, any information regarding our climate resiliency, so that's 9:15 to 5:30, again, on the 28th. And then on April 29th, the next day, we're hosting a Sustainable Building Resource Fair for folks who want to learn about energy efficiency upgrades.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Zach here. Not plugging in North Brooklyn DSA meeting this time. More importantly, I want everybody to know, two weeks from tomorrow is May Day. May Day, May Day, May Day. For those of you who have, maybe, might not be aware, the UAW, one of the nation's biggest unions, has called for 2028 to be a general strike. But the work against what's happening in our government starts now. You may have known, a couple weeks ago, there were like tens of thousands of people in the streets of New York City, led by unions, working class folks all across the city. May Day is looking like it's going to be even bigger. And so I just want to put on everybody's radar, like, if you're upset, if you're angry about what's happening, come out, join us in the streets, join working people, because it takes all of us coming together in these moments to demonstrate who really has the power and to really build towards if we want 2028 to be something different, that has to start now. We can't wait until a week before, you know, the elections in 2028 and expect that something's gonna be different. So May Day, look, you'll, you'll see it on the news, you'll see what's going on. But yeah, happy to share more information when I have it.
Hello, everyone, and congratulations to the new board. My name is Cirillo Tony Nunez. I'm here representing Bushwick Sports and Recreation. I want to remind you that we have ongoing registration, and I left the flyers back there. I also want to take this opportunity to share something that happened to me two years, two days ago, here in this community, and I think you should know. On Monday, I went to Furman Park with my grandkids and some other kids to practice baseball. And we had a pit bull attack one of my kids, and he was bitten in four places. We had to run to the dog and actually hit the dog to get the dog to let go. All right, so I just wanted you guys to know that. I think it's important.
Hi, my name is Nirveen. I'm with Cannawear and Cannabis NYC. Oh, can you hear me now? Hi, my name is Nirveen. I'm with Cannawear. I'm a community engagement coordinator. We're hosting an event on May 17th at Restoration Plaza. I know it's not in this community, but I'm here to spread out the word, provide education and resources to the community if they're interested in expanding their knowledge, and give them a clear path to resources in the cannabis space. So our event is to uplift the community, Community Summit. So due to cannabis prohibition and the provide impact of communities of color and racial injustices and disparities in law enforcement practices leading to higher arrest rates and convictions, this event is to help empower and prepare community members for opportunities in the industry. Cannawear, in partnership with Cannabis NYC, is hosting our Community Uplift, Community Summit to engage. This is, this, this event is designed to engage and empower and inspire individuals to help them address the challenges they face in the industry. This, attendees of this event will have access to the following presentation, panel discussion.
I'm so sorry, that's time. We have to keep it at one minute.
So, like I said, May 17th, join us, Restoration Plaza.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
So, Chris Graham, CB4. They say that a recession is when your neighbor loses his job, but a depression is when you lose yours. And so with that being said, if you were paying attention, were we doing attendants? Celeste called my name, but she thought that I was not gonna be here. And so as many of you know, I've been coming here for weeks talking about the college tour, college tour, college tour, college tour. And so the college tour was supposed to be this week. And if you're not paying attention to what's happening, this is the first time in 27 years that I had to cancel the tour. And we had to cancel the tour because parents are losing their jobs, the, the other programs that we're working with, they're losing their funding. So if you believe that this thing is not real, and you heard Mr. Camacho talk about it earlier, about the things they're taking away from the kids, it is very real. It's real, and it's affecting us. And with that being said, as the clock is ticking, you know, my dad would always say, keep going, champ, keep going. So I'm gonna keep going. And, you know, I had already called out, I took my excused absence, and I could have stayed home, but I came out tonight to fight again.
Just a really quick reminder that the tax lien sale is gonna be on May 20th. There's still time to get off of the list. So if you own your house here in Bushwick, or even if you're a tenant, please check the Department of Finance website to see if your, your, your building is on the list. Really, really important to get off of that. We've talked a lot about housing tonight, and, and folks, especially black and brown folks, getting pushed out of their communities. This is a big contributor to that. And Councilmember Nurses District, including the bottom half of Bushwick, is among the districts with the highest number of properties on the list. So please check, make sure you're not on the list. And if you are, there's still time to get off of it.
All right, board members, please be, we have someone on Zoom. Go ahead, Maria.
Yes, good evening, Maria Valdez, from the Office of Senator Julia Salazar. I just want to highlight what Senator Salazar is doing up in Albany. Senator Salazar and Assemblymember Emily Gellinger organized a total of 48 state legislators to sign a joint letter to the Governor, Senate Majority Leader, and Assembly Speaker, calling for funding that will prevent 60,000 families from losing their child care vouchers. And as a reminder, also, for the, to get your real ID, it will begin on May 7th. The federal government will require your driver The federal government will require your driver license permit or I D card to be a real I D compliant if you wish to use it as an identification for a domestic flight within the United States. Uh, we are trying to confirm, um, the D M B mobile. So if you would like more information, you can reach out to our office at seven one eight five seventy-three seventeen twenty-six. And also if you need support, um, scheduling an appointment, you can also reach out to our office. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will now move on to the second roll call. Board members, please be ready. I'm gonna say your name once. I need to know if you're here. Please say present. Linda Whitfield. Jerry Valentine.
Present, good night, everybody.
Thanks, Jerry. Ben Tucker. Christian Tate. James Stewart. Annette Spellen. Milagro Sandoval. Elise Ruiz. Raul Rubio. Zuma Navoa.
Present, good night.
Gotcha, Zee. Ramika Nichols Barnes. Alex Moreno. Christine Malden. Luisa Jose. Tara Jones Thomas. Vergi Jones. Gotcha, Vergi. Barbara Jackson. Deborah Hicks.
Good night.
Zachary Hendrickson. Anne Guiney. Christopher Graham. Jason Gears. Joanna Fuentes Singh. Freddie Fowler. Cecilia Fabian. Alvina Davis.
Present, good night.
Andrew Choi.
Present, good night.
Felix Ceballos. Robert Camacho. Maqiba Branaleen. Joanna Bennett. Stephanie Anderson. Joanna Bennett. Issa Abney. Motion to adjourn. Barbara Jackson makes a motion to adjourn, second by Issa. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. We are now adjourned at nine twenty-nine. Thank you, everyone.